Two minutes, two minutes.
One minute.
Oh, okay.
Is there anybody that needs to go to the top of the pack that has to get out of here for anything in particular?
I got something, yes.
Yeah, we'll start you here in a minute. I'll go to you first once we, once we start the meeting. And again, if you want to be addressed, make sure you use the microphone and capture it on the, uh, minutes of the meeting. Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. I hope everybody had a good weekend. Thank you for attending this morning. Uh, this will be our workshop in preparation for the regular May first meeting tomorrow. And Madam President, can you call the roll?
Mr. Councilor Mesa.
Here.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Ms. Franchco.
Absolutely. Okay, we're gonna start off, um, we got a couple of guests. I'm gonna start with this gentleman here.
Sure.
Ask first, so you can come on up and grab a seat or stand here. We got a good microphone right there that you can use, uh, they'll pick you up for this one right here.
Oh, okay. I'm just here because, because-
Name and where you're from, sir.
James Hessler, I'm a member of the Levesford Dam Committee. Uh, we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago with you guys, and there was a person at the table that was even close to what the depth of this river's gonna be when they're done. And we do have studies that were done back in two thousand twenty, twenty-one. This is one I'm writing. It's gonna be, you're gonna be surprised. I had this also looked over by a guy that's done this his whole life. I don't know if you know Ron Reed or not? He went over, he was an engineer for his whole life and it, it didn't surprise me because I read the old, uh, Corps of Engineers, guys from Washington DC when they were out here in the nineteen twenties, and he said the flow in this river can fall below twenty, uh, cubic feet per second at times. And when it does that, you got two inches of water in it. And when that happens, everything in it dies, okay? Uh, that's why we're so concerned. There's, there's not gonna be force water in it. There's gonna, there's gonna be somewhere between two inches and thirteen inches right in there. A normal, uh, summer pattern, pattern would be between ten and thirteen inches.
Well, if, if they did something, if he said that was in nineteen twenties he looked at, that was before Lake Milton and Berlin Lake-
Yeah.
-were built.
Yeah.
So, that was before they dammed it up and they, they do release water into the river, so just wanna make that a note that-
Yep.
Things have changed since nineteen twenty.
But they do, you know what they do.
Sure.
The Corps of Engineers does what they want.
We do, um-
Okay, anyway, that's the one that's, now this one there is the one that's gonna surprise you, two point six inches. Now, this, this is, when you, when you do depth, you gotta talk about what part of the river you're talking about. This is like the first mile up there. Uh, this is canoe city down here. And this is the part that's real wide. That's why the depth's like it is. Then when you get on up here a little bit and this, the bedrock takes a dip down, this is the elevation of the bedrock of the river. This is the water level, okay? Uh, you get up in the skinnier part, that's when you can see it gets a little bit deeper there. But this is the spot where most of the activity goes on down here, and that's the spot that's gonna be ruined the worst. Anyways, there's another one in here, the, the normal, normal somewhere else. Yeah, this one there. See, that's that same area with, uh, this is a little bit over average. The average cubic feet per second is about one twenty-five. This is a little bit higher than that. And we got eleven and thirteen, between eleven, this, this, okay, this one's eleven at, at one twenty-five, and this one's thirteen inches. Is that flow right there? So, that's why we're so upset.
I understand. And what I would ask those, sir, is get this to the new, um, company that's doing the, the independent study. Make sure they have all that information so they can gather it with, and sign off on it with their architects, their engineers.
It's from them, yes.
That's, that's the last one.
Now, this-
But, Mr. Hessler, too, just so you know, we're, we have that on the agenda today to the, uh, for the alternative study that we're helping do.
Of course.
So, that's something that can be included in that as well.
That's what I'm saying, to get it to them.
Yes.
So that he can discuss it with them, and they have that information in case they don't. And then they can compile it into their study they have, so we have it certified by them when we, when we come together to look at both studies.
All right. One more thing Mr. Reed wanted me to tell you guys is right now that thing is a reservoir, okay? As soon as they take the dam out, it's no longer a reservoir, and it's gonna start scrubbing the bottom with the current flow, which it doesn't do right now because it's a reservoir. Uh, when that happens, he said the bridges, uh, north of the roads in trouble, the abutments, uh, right where the dam is are in trouble. And I don't know if the rest of you know this, but there's hundreds of thousands of tons of contaminated sediments in there. They're just gonna start cleaning up immediately, sending them downstream. And nowhere have I seen anybody say anything about how they're gonna deal with that, so.
Well, they are, they did say in what's paid for now is they're going six hundred feet back from the dam where most of the sediment is, and they're taking that out first before they remove the dam, remove where they know the toxins are built up behind the dam. So, in their defense, they, they are addressing that at least six hundred feet from the dam. Now, all the way down the river, you know, we don't know what's-
I've got five hundred fifty tons just in my backyard.
Oh, okay.
There's a lot of it in there, you know, it's gonna need dealt with. We've got some bad stuff, DDT, chromium, uh, caustic soda, nickel, all kinds of stuff in there.
Well, we appreciate your input. Just make sure, please, get that, I would get that to Warren Township trustees, that they could provide it to the DLZ, know what I mean?
DLZ, yeah.
DLZ.
Yeah, they all got it.
So, they can, they can look at it to include in their, their research. Thank you.
Mr. Reed, we also have, uh, Ms. Annette McCoy here from the NAACP. Uh, I've been, um, working with her on, um, the, the injection well in, um, on four twenty-two, uh, in Southington Township. Uh, there's been a, a host of complaints by individuals and families living around that area, uh, about the smell, um, obviously some water quality, um, concerns as well, uh, whenever you deal with these last two, uh, brine injection wells. Annette, did you wanna talk a little bit about that as well?
Yeah, um, our interest has been, first of all, I live in that area. I live a half a mile from that location site. And, um, we have been involved, the NAACP locally, and I represent also the state level from the Ohio Conference as, like, I'm vice for the state. But our interest is the well-being of the constituents surrounding that particular location site. There has been issues ongoing since twenty fifteen. Um, a lot of the local residents have stress concerns. There's been calls. Um, I've made personal calls. I've met with ODNR on several occasions. We are represented by Dr. Ted Ock, who is our environmental justice chair for Tremble County. He's a geologist. So, we also concur with specialists in the field. Our main issue right now with that particular site, there's been an ongoing smell since January fourth. I actually called January fourth to the commissioner's office, and I've been doing that ongoing for the last six years, uh, reporting the smell. And ODNR would come out, they would do a follow-up, and whatever was necessary to improve the condition. We can't consistently have this going, ongoing for six to seven years. With the recent condition that happened, the constituents would like to have their well water tested. There is oil residuals in the well water in that community. And when we reached out to different localities and agencies to find out about the testing, there was gonna be a charge. Um, I feel strongly that because they are the constituents, I don't have well water, because I live in the city of Warren, but we should do something to support them having their well water tested. Their tests are sick. People are sick. People are in their homes with their windows taped in, in ninety-five masks on. I live off of Todd Avenue, not far from that location site. I can't sit in my backyard. On my way to work every day to Cleveland, you could smell it. One of the things, um, with ODNR, and I know that they have, um, a big territory to cover, because when we talk about injection wells under our umbrella, we're talking about the entire state of Ohio. And I think most of you sitting around this table are well aware, Astra Bula, Tremble, Mahoney, we take in probably eighty percent of the brine from Pennsylvania. So, we're taking in a lot. And with the recent push in oil and gas, and I'm not pushing in one way or another, I'm talking about what's going on in my backyard. Um, one of the causations that may be happening in that location site, because we don't have the report yet from ODNR, when they start injecting the fluid and they're injecting it at a fast rate, there can be an overflow. And there's overflow pools. And people didn't think about the overflow pools that are sitting next to, there's a bar location there. There's a farmhouse there. There's, um, a trailer, um, location there for a trailer park location. Nobody thought about people living around that area. It's not fenced in. It's located a half a mile from La Bay School. So, we don't know what's going on. If there is a tear or a crack in the cement where they're injecting into the ground, or there's a problem with the injection system, we need to close it down. I can see maybe one complaint, maybe two complaints, ODNR has called out, corrections are made, but we're talking over fifty to sixty complaints since twenty fifteen. I think everybody that is around this table, you may or may not be aware of what happened in the Vienna area with their injection sites. And there were a lot of missteps with that particular location. So, I'm here today asking first if allocations could be made for the people to have their water tested so that they're comfortable, so that they don't have to go out and buy water. Um, a lot of people are afraid to even take baths. We have a senior population living in that township. We need to take care of them. I'm a senior. Um, that's one of the things. The other thing we would like to have happen is maybe an independent study. ODNR is not really responsible for monitoring on a regular basis of the wells. Uh, we wrote legislation and right now is in, um, one of the state representatives to bring it to committee regarding putting further restrictions on those location sites, especially when they're adjacent to our schools and to our homes. So, our request is having the well water tested, further investigation, to have that particular location site shut down until it's deemed okay. And EPA needs to be called in for another, um, I shouldn't say opinion, but to review the findings of the ODNR.
Annette, um, first of all, I, I was here in, in twenty fifteen when that Vienna spill happened. And commissioners at that point issued a moratorium on all injection wells here in Tremble County, which fell on deaf ears, obviously. Um, because the state legislator in ODNR who regulates and, um, you know, oversees all the injection wells in, um, in and around the state, we've become a dumping ground for a lot of this waste from Pennsylvania, from West Virginia. Uh, I think, you know, obviously, the amount of permits that are issued for these wells and the amount of existing wells that we have here, we're, we're one of the highest counties in the state. Uh, and, um, you know, that's all fine and good, and we can be for fracking and, and, uh, you know, all those sort of things. But at the same time, when you're talking about putting this waste back into the ground, uh, and potentially contaminating, you know, you're, that site is a mile away, not even a mile away from the school. Um, you got families in and around there. You said the family farm with that one person who has to wear an N ninety-five mask. Uh, it, it's, it, it shouldn't be happening. And, uh, we need more oversight here in Tremble County. It's a shame because ODNR does regulate this, but, um, you know, if people want their water wells tested, they have to go to the health department, they have to pay. Well, shouldn't that be on the ODNR if there is a, any sort of risk to, so, so, in my estimation, in talking to Annette, um, I, I've, I've constructed, uh, a letter outlining some of the needs that, that a lot of the residents have there when it comes to water well testing, when it comes to air quality testing. Um, the last five, five reports that the ODNR has in their possession that they haven't made public, uh, that they should be made public and transparent. Um, I, I'd like, with your permission, to send that letter on behalf of the board to ODNR to get some of those answers as to how we best combat this on a local level.
Have, have we talked to Warren City Health Department? And she says she lives in Warren.
Yes, I did talk to Mr. Mays regarding this condition with going on there.
But that would, are they doing their own independent letter? Would that be something where we would sign on a little letter from them? Are they gonna do anything?
I, I mean-
That's clearly mostly their jurisdiction if anybody's besides-
No.
Well, well-
It's outside the city.
Outside the city there, too.
It's Southington Township.
Okay, I thought she said she lives in the city.
She lives in-
Where the smell and-
The smell is-
But Southington, Brayville, Warren Township, um-
I was in Brayville.
Obviously with Promoting and Buying Health District. I've talked to, I'm sorry, I've talked to Mr. Migliozzi on that as well. Um, you know, back in twenty fifteen, the health department tried to get the state to have, uh, local health departments regulate this sort of thing with the wells and everything. That fell on deaf ears.
That'll never happen. Four lobbies in the state, it's never gonna happen.
It's never happened. And, and unfortunately, the people who live in and around these sites are having to wear N ninety-five masks, worry about their children. Um, you know, you can be pro, um, alternative means of energy and, and fracking and all that, but, but these injection wells are something different. And, and until we find a way to, to, you know, safely dispose of this, to where we're not putting people at risk, I don't see why Tremble County should be a dumping ground for other states either, just because we're on the border of these states. So, um, we need to do everything we can in our power to urge the state to look at this, this site, and, and, you know, trustee Suddles came to our meeting as well about permitting that other site in Brookfield. So, there's another site that's going in. And that community, uh, is definitely concerned, and, and a lot of those property owners are in an uproar. So, um, I think at the end of the day, we need to send some sort of letter to, and I, and I've drafted it, and with your approval, you can look at it and, and sign off on it if you like, but I'd like to give a copy to you as well on that. And a lot of the things that we discussed, I tried to include in that letter-
Thank you.
-um, for, for local oversight and possible resources and funding to help us along these lines. I mean, this, if it's gonna be regulated by the state and ODNR, it shouldn't fall on our health departments or these families that have to pay for it. So, um, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna try to get as much information as they have on these, because they've been out there a number of times, and nobody has seen these reports, as far as I know. Annette, has, has anybody-
No, not at all.
Has those been made public? Uh, and, and, you know, we're just asking for transparency, and we're asking for much-needed assistance for the people in and around that site, so. Something you can look at.
Yep.
And I'm happy to have Annette here to, to talk to myself.
Absolutely support that. I'm reading the letter, of course, and-
Yes.
But I've-
If it adds anything or-
That's probably all we can really do at this point is requests from the state-
Yes.
Officially from us. I don't know where we have any, I mean, we don't have any legislative teeth with anything like that, um, or Health Department. I'm not sure.
But if, if, if indeed, and I hate to do this, because our general fund, we use it for purposes of, you know, our mandated services that we have to use, but if people in this area need help or assistance-
See, I, I, I don't wanna go down that road yet, and the reason being is we do have wells all over the county.
I know, I know.
We open it up for one neighborhood, then why, how do we tell Brookfield and Hartford and Kinsman and, and anywhere else, or maybe Wells, that their neighbors can't get the funding if we're funding one neighborhood and not theirs? That opens it up, and now all of a sudden we are, um, the Red Cross for this type of a thing, and we-
I know.
No offense to wha, any certain neighborhood, but we just gotta tread cautiously with that because-
Well, all I ask is that we-
We gotta be fair to the whole county entirely.
Potentially entertain it for these sites and these families.
But what happens when there is a positive outcome of exposure? Because we're talking cancer-causing fluids-
Sure, then that would be, that would be civil action against the company or against the-
No, I'm not talking about civil action, but our responsibility to the communities, whether this community gets the testing or this one, right now, the problem is in that location site. And I don't think the other people may or may not have issues. If we-
We, we've got other complaints from other communities, too. There have been complaints because I've been here.
So, it's a statewide issue that I will address at the state because, um, this is really serious. If we don't have, again, my background is healthcare. I'm a retired healthcare administrator. When I look at the cause and effect, and we live in an area with one of the highest situations of MS lupus cancer, and I worked for NIH in Maryland and did a study on brain tumors within the Youngstown and Mahoney area, we have to be proactive when it comes to the health of our community. And personally, I think with maybe funding, I even, you know, I talked to our safety director, Aidy Colbert. You know, we had art money, we had different fundings, but what is the cost that we are paying to ensure that our community is safe? That's minimal cost.
I agree, Annette. And, um, we, we can, uh, discuss more. I'd like to be a part of any sort of meetings that you have with any sort of state legislators. I could facilitate those if you'd like. Um, this is, when you talk about MS and all these other autoimmune and different diseases in this area and why they're so prevalent, no one can tell you right now what's, what's happening with that, if it seeps into the water table or if it gets, uh, into a community, but the long-term effects of that have yet to be realized, really. And that's the scary part.
Yeah.
We wanna nip it in the bud now.
Have we ever had anybody from Division Oil and Gas speak at one of our meetings or, or meetings?
I would love, I would love to have them here, especially if, Annette, if you'd like to be here with Dr. Off as well.
We've had them several times, yes.
But in a public meeting.
Oh, that's fine. That'll be great.
I think that would, I think that's a, that's a great idea. Uh, if, if Oil and Gas Division will come out here and speak, I think that would be wonderful. They tend to not do that at public meetings in my past history with them, so we can give it a shot.
Very good.
And I'd like to send you that after we take a look at it. That's okay. Thank you.
I'm very passionate about it because this is something that's personalized.
Sure.
But it's something that we have been working on, and I've sent, um, numerous studies that have been done out of Maryland. Um, there was published, um, documents from a group of research doctors regarding brine and the effect it has.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anyone else have any input on this issue? Thoughts?
Martha, Tremble County Auditor, have you spoken to anybody from the Ohio Township Association? Because that's a township, Southington Township. They have done some stuff in the past on injection wells, and the Township Association in Tremble County also, at one point, had an injection well committee-
They did, yeah.
That Dominic Marquez, if, yeah, that he headed up. And so, you know, they may have some ideas as well.
Good input.
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you, Martha.
And Martha, if you can help, um, get her the information for the Township Association rep, I think Mr. Kudkaz, the rep to the commissioners right now.
Yes.
But, uh, you probably reach out directly to Mr. Marquez or Becky Whitman or whatever to-
You know, Mr.-
Get her a number.
And just as an FYI, Mr. Marquez's grandson is our state rep-elect.
Yes.
So, that may help a little bit.
Okay. Um, let's move on to our regular agenda then. Okay, dispense with the reading in a minute. Number two, approve the bills. Number three, transfer monies.
What Bob's got, because all of them are. These are all related to sanitary engineers, because Bob's sanitary. Um, the first one for two hundred and thirty-two thousand four hundred and eighty-seven dollars is a transfer from our replacement improvement fund to the almonds package, or the almonds wastewater treatment plant project fund, and that's just to pay for the actual purchase of the plant. Um, the remaining five are all moving cash from our old water funds to our new water fund of six oh one.
Okay. Remove additional appropriations?
I'm gonna let you do yours, and then I'll do mine, right?
So, sanitary engineers has the third one on the list for eighty-two thousand four hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Um, that is in our almonds wastewater treatment plan, uh, project, and that's just moving in appropriations to have enough money to purchase the actual package.
Okay, um, Martha Yoder, Tremble County Auditor, um, Court of Appeals, um, we had to fix the twenty twenty-four budget because we reduced it. Um, and the reason that we made that, um, mistake was that, uh, we didn't realize that they were, requests were based on the pro-rata share of the counties. Um, the revenue side of this will be addressed at our next budget commission meeting, which is, uh, May thirteenth. Treasurer is Microsoft three sixty-five. Uh, he just did sanitary. Neocap is me, um, uh, medical reimbursement for prescriptions. Um, the revenue side of this was approved, um, on Monday at our budget commission meeting. Um, the sheriff's office is travel for two weeks of training. Um, number five, uh, to approve transfer of appropriations. Um, neocap is shortages of miscellaneous budget lines, in miscellaneous budget lines, sorry, soil and water conservation is replace the transmission in, um, a district vehicle. Senior Levy, um, has two, Microsoft three sixty-five and an increase in posted.
Okay. Moving on to number six, authorize the purchase of body cameras to Motorola Solutions, used by Tremble County Sheriff's Office, purchase amount three hundred and fifty-two thousand three ninety-eight, to be paid for using fund number oh one, oh two oh, fourteen hundred, fourteen hundred, one, five oh five, four two one, and using sixty-eight thousand one fifty-eight in grant monies, and a transfer of two hundred and eighty-four thousand two forty from another fund, uh, recommendation of Major Villanueva.
Major Villanueva, Tremble County Sheriff's Office. Um, last month, we put a request in for ARPA funds to complete the project for body cameras. Uh, we have sixty-eight thousand dollars coming from OCJS, um, to fund, um, start up the cost of the, uh, body camera grant, uh, body camera project. To complete that, uh, for all the deputies to, um, have body cameras, um, that will be meaning two hundred and eighty-four thousand, um, change.
Yeah, which is gonna come from where?
It's from nine twenty-eight, which is the sales tax justice.
Yeah.
On both of these, that's where the transfers are coming, both of those.
So, is that, is that coming out of their budget, the regular budget that we've-
No, no, it's a transfer from nine twenty-eight, from excess nine twenty-eight.
Yeah.
But this wasn't allocated in their budget, yeah?
Correct. This is, this was not part of their budget.
So, this is in addition to that from us?
Both six and seven are that. They had a requested those as ARPA. You had those two requests set aside on the maybe list, not on the yes list.
Right.
And so-
Because we thought there was grant money coming in, and I didn't realize it was gonna be just sixty-eight thousand, and we'd cover the two eighty-four-
Right.
On top of it. Um, that's a pretty big, big chunk there.
Yeah, we discussed that in that workshop. We, we came last month. We talked about the ARPA funds, uh, the requests, and that's when it was decided that we would move forward with projects, just finding different funding other than ARPA. Um, and we discussed how much it was at that time, two hundred and eighty-four thousand and completed.
So, this is more important than the floors and the lighting, you guys, right now?
Body cameras.
Yeah.
I would say so.
Yeah. I just wanna hear from them, because there are three pending requests, and we do one, and we don't address the other one right now. I just wanna make sure that's their priority as far as the department goes. Yeah. No problem with that, then?
Okay.
Authorize the purchase of Mark's radios from Bear Communications for the use of Tremble County Sheriff's Office. Purchase them out to reprogram and update a hundred and thirty radios. It'll be fifty-three thousand three sixty-seven. Sheriff's Office purchased fifty, purchased fifty additional portable radio batteries. Its current portable radios are in need of replacement. Cost for new batteries will be seven thousand sixty dollars, and you'll purchase ten new Motorola APX eight thousand radios, and total cost of seventy-nine thousand three ten fifty-three. Total project cost will be a hundred and thirty-nine thousand seven thirty-seven, uh, using one fund with the transfer monies from another- using one fund with the transfer monies from another fund. Major Villanueva?
Again, this is the, the second ARPA fund request that we put in last month, um and we uh we brought it up in the uh workshop where we would find another source to pay for this project. Uh this is important because of the hundred and thirty radios that we currently have, um they are not going to work in two thousand and twenty-five. So reprogramming these radios uh is a lot less expensive. We're looking at almost eight hundred thousand dollars to replace all those radios. So to re- uh reprogram them, um uh it's many more years out.
Martha, we got the money in there for this?
Yes. Same fund, same sales tax justice.
Uh in, again, to purchase uh batteries for our current portable radios, um so they will get upgraded and also uh as batteries start to fail, we can replace some of the batteries in them, and also ten additional portable related radios. Right now, we are two rigs short for staffing.
Ms. Shaw, any thoughts?
Good.
Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you. Number eight, accept the resignation of Mr. Keith Ames from his position of TV inspector, grounding assistant technician with Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department, effective May third, two thousand and twenty-four. His resignation will be recorded into the journal for record purposes.
Bob Meyer, in of Sanitary Engineers, um Keith's got another job that pays a little bit more.
So this is the one that resigned because he's getting another job, then retracted the resignation, then found another job, he's resigning again.
Correct.
He's in the running for the other guy.
He, you know, yeah.
You know.
He, he shall remain named.
Yeah.
No, seriously, what was the other guy's name?
Chikolow.
Yeah. So right now, him and Chikolow are both candidates for the Hall of Fame.
Or she is.
He's a good employee and-
I think he does have to get hired one more time, transferred and quit one more time to equal Mr. Chikolow. But he's on his way, he's well on his way there, but it's early in the year.
Right.
No, we wish him the best. Yeah, he literally um took up three pages of real estate over the last couple of months. That's, that's pretty important there, pretty powerful. Number nine, concur with Trumbull County Engineers to grant the special hauling permit to haul steel coils on Trumbull County roadways for P I N I Motor Express. Concur with Trumbull County Engineers to close the roadways as listed, Larchmont Avenue and Howland Township between Dietz Road, Bronze Road and Overland Avenue intersection for sanitary sewer connection, and that'll be closed April twenty-third.
That should say Thursday, the twenty-fifth.
Okay, Thursday. April twenty-five. And then Kibler Toot Road in Warren Township near Levitt Road and Kibler Toot for bridge replacement, and that'll be closed from Monday, May sixth through Friday, June seventh. Okay, number eleven, concur with Trumbull County Engineer to grant the special annual supplier fleet permits for fleet vehicles to transport aggregate concrete construction goods and other like material to sites located upon load posted Trumbull County roadways or prescribed by the property owners listed. Daryl Rathburn, Bob Streas service in the stump room here. Concur with Trumbull County Engineer to grant the right-of-way permits requested by the companies listed. The necessary permit fee has been submitted and approval is subject to the conditions listed on the permit, Village Energy Cooperative and MJD Excavating. Number thirteen, establish the creation of the COVID nineteen Bridge Vaccination Fund, known as Fund nine seventy-eight, for use by the Trumbull County Combined Health District. A notice of award seventy-five thousand sixty-seven was received from O D H, and it's per the recommendation of Daniel Dean, Fiscal Officer, Ohio Department of Health. This is a new grant they got that we have to set a fund up for their usage. Number fourteen, enter into an amended agreement binding between the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners of Trumbull County, Ohio, BTCC and the City of Cortland, as approved by Baker, Dublak, Beck, Wiley and Matthews, ARPA Legal Counsel for the City to purchase standby power generators for the city's water supply system, fully described in Exhibit A attached here to Incorporated by Reference, and the BTCC allocate the sum of three hundred thousand dollars to the city. Amendment is necessary to make the accounting dates consistent with each other in line with more recent agreements. The amended agreement will replace the existing agreement previously authorized uh by the BTCC on January tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. All we're doing is we're giving them the money, but things have changed contractually with that company, we're just changing-
It's just, it's just the accounting dates, um they weren't consistent with each other, I'm sorry, Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, um they had noted that in the agreement that um Attorney Rogers had originally prepared, the accounting dates within it were not consistent with each other. In addition, we've been doing some later dates, um deadline dates that are now consistent with um what the final rule says, and so we're just kind of making all of it um together. And you may see some more of these because we have some agreements that had some earlier dates that now we can kind of go a little bit further out because of the way that the final rule has turned out. Um I know we have one, at least, I have a question from West Fraser Port Authority on there that I'm just, it's on my desk and um I need to talk it over with Mr. Masaki, but we'll probably have at least one more.
Uh number fifteen, adopt a resolution to proclaim the month of May, two thousand and twenty-four is Foster Care Month in Trumbull County, Ohio, in conjunction with National Foster Care Month. The Board of Trumbull County Commissioners wishes to honor all foster parents and volunteers who selfishly give of their time and resources to help children or provide them with the much-needed love and care and thanks. Uh these individuals are investing their lives in children, thereby giving them hope for a brighter future. Foster parents show their commitment by sharing their lives with children who need safe homes and warm hearts. There are currently fifty-one licensed foster families and approximately a hundred and thirty children in foster and residential care in Trumbull County. The Board also wishes to commend the Trumbull County Children's Services Board for its dedicated service and commitment towards promoting the best interest in the care of foster children throughout Trumbull County. God bless those fifty-one families for doing what they do.
That's right.
And number sixteen, to receive and place on file the February and March, two thousand and twenty-four monthly financial report for the Trumbull County Tourism Bureau as submitted by Beth Carmichael, Executive Director. Okay, Beth's not here. Seventeen, to authorize the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners clerk to advertise for sealed proposals for community-based services and mini-grants to be provided for senior citizens, individuals sixty years and older residing in Trumbull County. Service contracts will be twenty-four month period, beginning September one and ending August thirty-first, twenty-six. Total funds available, two million annually, total four million to be distributed in the following areas, one point five one five in home services, homemaker, personal care, meals, shore, daycare, two hundred and seventy thousand adult protective services, fifteen thousand mini-grants and two hundred thousand other program funding. Diane?
Diane is right here.
Diane, this is Jacobic. Um I talked to you last week about this, we are releasing our, some of our carryover funds in order to increase uh the possibility of service areas in the area of homemaker, home-delivered meals, and we also added a new um area called other programs to funding that will be for uh new programs that Senior Levy has never funded. So this is just the uh request to place that legal ad in the paper, the RFP has been approved by the prosecutor's office. We do have a copy of the legal ad, we've got a attached original request, Lisa, do I need to email that to you or put it in the paper?
Please.
Okay.
So when, when, when is this deadline gonna be and what-
The legal ad will be in the paper, I hope, for the weekend edition, and then um RFP can be requested as a starting date Monday, May, what is that, sixth? And the deadline date will be May thirty-first at eleven o'clock, which is Friday, right after the um Memorial Day weekend.
So that's new care providers, that they want to apply to be a provider, or they want to-
Any interested provider, yes.
Okay.
They can email request@RFP and I'll send that out to them.
How much will we have left in our carryover?
Roughly about eight hundred thousand dollars, which is always the end-of-the-year carryover I like to have in order to be able to pay bills for that first quarter of the year. This is a two-year contract as well. I also mentioned that this is with hopes of having a replacement levy on the ballot to, in order to continue these services after the following year.
Eighteen, authorize Danny Malloy, President of Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to sign a notice to proceed letter for W C Zabel Company, D B A A and N Restaurant Equipment and Supplies, Community Development Grant Program, Project One, Activity Two, Senior Center, Allen Scope Center Kitchen Equipment, awarded on March sixth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Anybody from Plant A here? CDBG allocation, um obviously uh Scope, Allen Scope qualified for this, um they do a lot of work with our seniors as well, so just a CDBG allocation, let me get-
Okay, number nineteen, authorize change order two for TK Excavating for the Heat and Shoots Sanitary Lateral Assistance Program for LMI households funded through P Y two thousand and twenty-two Community Development Block Grant, Residential Public Infrastructure Grant Program, and the American Rescue Plan Act. The original contract is the amount of fifty-eight thousand three twenty, and seven thousand for one A R P household were awarded on January eighteen. Change order two is necessary as one of the homes located at thirteen eighty-three Heaton Boulevard Niles was sold, and the new owner only qualifies for assistance through the American Rescue Plan Act. Change order two, we'll keep the total contract amount the same, fifty-eight three twenty, but change the funding breakdown to thirty-seven seven fifteen for five CDBG households, and twenty thousand six oh five for two A R P households, per the Planning Commission. So that's just getting their stuff in order.
Mm-hmm, change order.
Okay, twenty, accept the change of job status of Colley Beach, full-time telecommunicator in Trumbull County nine one one center to part-time telecommunicator, effective May fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. Ms. Beach will be compensated per CBA at the hourly rate of fourteen seventy-five for part-time employment. Ms. Beach will work a minimum of eight hours per week, not to ex- don't exceed sixty-two hours in eighty-hour pay period. Uh recommendation of Tracy McDonough. Tracy?
Tracy McDonough, I'm the Wellin Director. Um Kayla Beach has decided that she's gonna be going back to school. Um it was posed to her at the time of her um discussion with Patty, um you know, what can we do to keep you here? She, she currently is only in, has been in for about a year, um she's not at top scale, so like, hey, if we, if we moved you to top scale, would you stay? And the answer was no. Um she's looking at going back to school and changing fields, looking for better schedules. Um you know, as you know, we work twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, and nowadays, that's not looked as good job to anybody, so um really, there was nothing else we could do. Um not a money issue, um it's more scheduling and, and time off and workplace home balance and those things. So we hate to see her go, but she has agreed to stay on uh part-time. Hopefully she'll help out fill in some shifts here and there.
So we're gonna lose another thirty-two hours of the work week from employees there, which brings us down pretty much another person.
And we're potentially looking at another one right now, too.
All right, we gotta stop the bleeding here somehow. This is, this has been, since I got here a year and a half ago, we're still going down and down and down and down, even making changes. We have to figure something out to-
I, I think-
-to spark this, this is getting scary.
I think that, and I'm, I'm not one to, you know, the, the CBA is what it is and that was collectively bargained, but the fourteen seventy-five to start here, I think has everything to do with it.
That's a big portion of it, I'm sure.
That, that's the part-time wage, um our-
Okay.
Our current starting for full-time is over seventeen dollars.
I was gonna say, yeah.
And with their shift differential and the other benefits that they have for E and D-
Nevertheless.
They're up over eighteen something.
Okay.
Um I, I hate, I always say this, I hate to be the jerk, but I'm always a jerk. I mean, we could pay them thirty dollars an hour and people still would not come to this field and want this job because of the work you do. The amount of phone calls that they take, I mean, we need to look at seriously, potentially looking at some type of A I of handling our non-emergency calls.
Yeah.
A lot of it is the amount of work that they do. A lot of it is the agencies that we work with, um Hubbard, City of Warren, places like that, that at night, they roll their phone numbers over to, to our agency. Um any business card that you see from a police officer, when you get your vehicle towed, they give you a card. That's our number that they call, it's not the police agency that they call. That's gotta stop. We gotta get to a point where that ends, because what's happening is we're getting inundated with two hundred and twenty-five thousand calls per year that aren't our responsibility to handle. We're not secretaries, that goes with that whole reclassification.
Yes.
You know, that's not our job. These agencies are gonna need to hire some part-time clerks who answer the phone after hours, or go to an automated system that says, you know, press one for towing, press three for, you know, traffic tickets for the stop, you know, the, the, like Liberty has the video traffic tickets. Um those are all things that we're handling that shouldn't be handled by us. Um we're in the middle of the feasibility study, and what they're gonna come back and say most likely is that we should probably have thirty-six to forty-four on dispatch. But the problem is, is it's not just here. Yes, morale here is a struggle, yes, there are some issues that we're working on with standardization and policies and procedures and all those things, but we're not immune to the same thing that every other dispatch center in the country is facing right now.
Some of which have more funding than we have locally.
Some have a lot more funding than we have.
And they still have the turnover.
And they still have issues. And it, it just goes to show, like, with her saying, hey, if we moved you to top pay, because she's currently at like eighteen dollars, you know, which she would go up to twenty-three, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three bucks an hour, um had no interest in it. Um a lot of it is, nobody wants to work the shifts we work, nobody wants to work the kind of calls that we take. Um and that's just, I don't want to say generational, but it's just society nowadays. Uh finding workers is difficult. We have two applicants right now that are um going through the pipeline, uh we've implemented the critical that you guys approved last week, um we're, we're getting that onboarded right now to test the two new candidates-
Good.
-before we bring them for recommendation for hire. Hopefully that will help with retention and staffing, but even during the feasibility study, they sat down and they said, we're having the same thing, their, their retention rate is twenty-five percent as some of these other centers. Um I don't know what the answer is, unfortunately. Uh we're, we're kind of stuck with not having applicants, and then the applicants that we do have, once they're in for a year, you know, they might get poached by another agency who pays more and has less call volume. So it's, unfortunately, we're in a just perpetual cycle of getting one almost ready to be released, and we lose two, which is exactly where we are. We lost one in medical and retirement uh recently, and then with her resignation, and we have another one that's interviewing for day shift jobs, Monday through Friday weekends, all eight to five.
Well, let's hope that program that we invested in will at least find candidates that are, that are, you know, that are not gonna have, I mean, it's unforeseeable that like this person here was gonna change courses and, and go back to school, but for the most part, it's gonna weed out the ca- the, the candidates that aren't truly in it.
Might not make it through, right.
Aren't truly in it.
And, and that's, that's the other thing where, there's no academy for somebody that wants to be a dispatcher.
No, yeah.
You know, apart, you have the police, people who want to go be a police officer trooper, they have trooper academy, you know, there's nobody that says, oh, I want to be a dispatcher. Just, you happen to fall into that either by you wanted to be a cop and it didn't work out, or you didn't like it, or you grew up with it, like I did, you know, dad was a cop, kind of grew up around it and thought, oh, that'd be a cool career. It's not something where somebody says, oh, I, I want to go be a public servant, we talk too rudely and, you know, all, all those things.
Right.
That's not, it's not a, you know, an ideal job. It's a great job, but you have to be the type of person that likes to do that kind of work.
All the more reason the state should reclassify these employees.
Yeah, I just um read an update to the nine one one saves act, they're still pushing through at the Senate right now, hopefully that'll gain some momentum.
So we gotta figure something out, whether it be changing the shift hours to tens and
giving them more days off, or we, we gotta figure something out because what we have now clearly isn't working. Um I believe in the leadership we have there, but, you know, we've had nine one one thirty, thirty years as it sits, and we've never had staffing issues like we have now. I mean, now is, we're almost to a critical point, I mean, in-
Yeah.
Like-
We've been at some critical point.
We gotta be, what, we gotta be under twenty full-timers now?
I think we're uh-
We've hovered around that for- We've hovered around that for-
Yeah, we, we've hovered around that.
I mean, I remember we were twenty-five, then went to twenty-three and it, it with this last medical retirement and this now, it's got to be, we got to be-
I think we're going to be at nineteen once.
For three shifts, twenty-four seven. I mean, that, that puts strain on the workers that are there, which creates an even worse cycle because then people are still getting forced. There's no coverage if people want to take their vacations to, to get away and, and-
Not to mention one-
Personal days and all the comp time they're building up, they can't even use it all.
And when workers are strained, that's what mistakes-
And then that's going to put it on us at the end of the year, you know, paying people out and people cashing things in and then it, it's going to create more of a financial strain. We'd rather the people use their vacation than get paid for it. You know, we'd rather go clear their head and get away and refresh than just collect a paycheck at the end of the year and deal with the stress all year long. So we've, we've got to figure something out. I mean, maybe within the new review board, talk to other agencies, have some, maybe request assistance from some others, you know, what do they do or, or something because this is a-
Yeah.
Unfortunately, when you're here at the meetings, it's some form of bad news lately that it's one more-
Welcome to every day of being in my work.
I understand that.
It's always bad news. Yeah, unfortunately, I mean, I think nationally, we're not the only ones faced.
I understand that.
I, I mean, I know, I know you're tired of hearing it, I'm tired of hearing it.
And, and we see with our, our-
Things across the board, so.
Our corrective officers also in the jail. I mean, we got the same revolving door thing there, too. And that's something that it takes a special person, but they got to be out there and we just got to reach out through our whole community and find them. You know, whether it's job fairs or whether it's recruiting in the schools, going to TCTC, coming up with a shadow program or, or something there that to get people involved. That's the first place I think we need to look is see if we can involve that somehow.
I mean, we've reached out and gone that route before.
I mean, there's no, there's no shortage of applicants, it's just-
Oh, no, there's a shortage of applicants.
There's a shortage, okay, all right.
In the last month, we've had two applicants.
But I mean-
They're both going through the process.
Individuals that'll pass drug tests or, or that are willing to work these shifts. Start to weed those candidates out kind of quickly.
I wish we could even weed them out, like back ninety-seven when I started, we'd have a hundred people show up for this batch job. You'd weed that down, you'd get down to fifty after drug screen, history background, all those things. Nowadays, we're literally getting maybe one application a month.
Let, let me ask Annette while you're here, Annette, with N double ACP, I don't think we have anyone of color there at the nine one one center either, do we? I don't remember ever having anybody nine one one center the last twenty or thirty years. Is that something where maybe we can help through job fairs or through the community of, we got to have people in this county that want to work and it's-
I, I would say work with, if you give me the information where it's posted on the website, I can link it. Can I share something really quickly? When I was at Duke Hospital in North Carolina, our call center at the hospital was affiliated with the nine one one center. So I don't know if that's something you can look into. Some of the clinic hospitals, we were able to do and support nine one one calls through the city, like a Hill Press Hospital, because they already have call centers in place. And again, a lot of people are more, I would say, trained to handle emergency situations and that is something that could possibly be built on here locally.
So in other words, those calls would be routed to-
There was a whole call center, like forty people at the hospital taking all kinds of calls.
How would that affect the CBA agreement and?
It is, it is a specialized field, too, where they really need to be trained in a certain, that cat system's not easy. I mean, some of the, the men and women that are working there have three, four screens at a time they're, they're handling with some, one could be a, a bad emergency call while they're handling other calls. So I, I understand your point with that with some of these rollover call type thing.
Not to mention you'd be farming out union work on a, when you have a CBA and now that could be an issue, too, where you'd have grievances. I'm just saying.
No, I mean, I'm sure the unions all ears with this, too. They want to make sure their employees aren't overworked. So I mean, they, more employees is better for them, we just need to find-
Yeah.
I mean, for two people to apply in a month.
I mean, we'll get, you know, we'll get other ones through indeed and stuff, but it's people who have no prior, you know, a lot of times indeed is just a funnel of people applying for hundreds of jobs.
They just apply for everything.
Yeah, and it's, you take more time going through those and waiting them out, which hopefully the critical will help weed out, you know, candidates who have the, you know, attitude to be able to do that type of job. I think honestly for me, the bigger part would be if we can implement some type of phone tree or hitting these agencies that we work with, which I'm going to try to update the nine one one final plan, where these are not services that we are going to provide any longer. So when you, you know, X police department puts, call this number for this issue, we aren't going to be doing that anymore. If you look at Google and you look for a dispatch number to call, it's our number for these various agencies. It's not their own number. They need to realize they either need to implement an answering service after hours like a doctor's office does that says, you know, for non-emergency issues or officer calls back or, or these types of things or detectives for follow-up or police reports or all these things that can be handled by those individual agencies. That needs to be put back on them. I don't know why we've become basically a sanitation department for everybody's junk to roll to us. And I mean, there, there's no-
Eighty employees doing Oregon thirty, they can't do that, we got to cut back somewhere, that's a reasonable-
There's no clear way to say it, I mean, I hate to say that, but we are basically the county trash can of, I don't want to handle this call or I don't want to handle, you know, and you have people who call and when they get a phone tree, you know, they instantly hit zero or one because that gets you through to dispatch. So a phone tree is not going to help unless you bury it as number seven or eight where they actually have to listen to the whole phone tree and say, you know, I need the sanitation department push one, I need Hubbard, one, two, you know, Warren, three. And people, people are impatient, they don't want to wait for that. We're, we're, you know-
So let me ask you this, do other communities and other counties have that system where they implement this and, and the respective municipalities or townships handle, you know, the, those types of calls? Would we be the only one or is that happening all over the?
No, I mean, other, other agencies should be responsible for their own workload. It's just because we are there twenty-four seven, they don't have somebody there twenty-four seven. It, it needs to be more about public information of sharing the information of saying, hey, you know, from eight to four, our offices are manned at X police department, this is two of our records or whatever.
Problem is those, those individual units, whether they be police or fire or whatever, I mean, they, they don't have the resources to hire those individuals either.
Right.
So they're going to say in their budget, we don't have-
These are non-emergent. These are non-emergency issues, correct. So, you know, by definition of people-
But ne- nevertheless, you've still got to ha- these, these places start to hire.
Right, and what you just said there about they don't have the resources to hire these people, neither do we.
I know, I know.
You can most likely hire a federal staff, that's not an emergency.
But you're slapping something off on somebody who can't do it either, you know.
Right, but when you look at it in the sense of we're having trouble finding dispatchers, you could probably go find somebody that wants to work Monday through Friday, eight to four, answer a phone for the police department, handling service calls. You could probably find those applicants. I can't find somebody that wants to work twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, holidays, weekends, all those things, dealing with the calls that we get. And, and as a society, we're just, we're soft. We are, the young, younger people that we get working for now don't know how to deal with people talking to them the way that we're spoken to. Those of us that are, have gray hair, you know, we're used to being berated and talked to, you know, in that fashion. We're used to it, you can compartmentalize it. Nowadays, people don't have the, the fundamental basic ability of communicating because all we do is sit here and text with everybody, we don't know how to actually communicate.
Systemic, cultural problem, yeah.
Sorry, I haven't heard your point yet. I mean, Denny, can I say something?
You sure can, name for the record.
So Tony Deli, Delegate of West Reservability Trades, also Business Manager, Fire Works Global two oh seven. So what works with, with us, our contractors talking about CBAs, most of our CBAs include a four-ten work week, which is a straight time four-ten work week. And us, because we do a lot of mill maintenance in plants around the seven counties that represent, is we are also doing a three-twelve shift where you're working three-twelves and off four days. We do another three-twelve off four days. So I don't know how your scheduling works or how that goes.
We would love to get to that so we don't have the minimum meet the twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. In order for us to get to that point, we would probably need twenty-six, twenty-seven. Our people are working twelve because of overtime anyway. I would love to get to the point where we could say, you're working twelves is your normal shift.
Yeah.
Because then you're getting an extra day off every week and guess what? We're saving a ton of money because we're not paying overtime.
Overtime.
They aren't going to like it because their, their paychecks are going to go back down into the range of what they were hired in at instead of the amount of overtime that they're getting.
But they're not overworked either and they have that time that they so desperately want and need. There's, there's got to be some sort of balance, yeah.
Well, we wish you the best of luck.
I love delivering rainbows and sunshine every time I come into the fire.
We need to figure something out because there will be a point if it keeps going that trend where we'll be, what do we do if we get to fifteen?
Well, that's-
What do we do if we, if three people decide they're going to retire?
You know, to everyone's credit who's there and been there prior to me getting there, they've managed to keep the level of service the same. Credit, they may be frustrated and overworked and, and, and burnt out, but we've not cut any services for, you know, per se. That would be the next step would be cutting services and saying, we're not answering non-emergency lines anymore. But then what's going to happen, if that gets out, then everybody's just going to call nine one one.
Right.
So you, you can't, you can't fix a broken system and it all starts from the top. You know, nine one one and police departments and fire departments and ambulance services should all be funded better from the top down, higher up than local government, you know what I mean? But, you know, that's what I like to talk about.
Well, I guess for department heads, next time their employees come to you with a gripe, tell them they could be working at nine one one, it could be a lot worse right now. We're going to fix it somehow. All right, Tacey, and then next one, authorize you to sign a contract renewal document for nine one one network with existing vendor Century Link Communications, DBA Lumen Technologies Group. Chamois County nine one one's current network is facing rerates with Lumen Technology Group, which would be an increase of over fifteen hundred dollars per month with no additional services or improvements to the network. The proposed contract will provide diverse paths and redundant connections at five locations, now as Lordstown, Howland, Warren and Gerard. The contract cost will be nine thousand one hundred ninety per month for sixty months for a total of five hundred and fifty-one thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars. When Chamois County nine one one relocates, the Howland location can be recruited and adjusted. The master service agreement has been reviewed and approved by the prosecutor's office.
So they just did rerates, basically, they're trying to get rid of the old T-one copper circuits coming in for our network. The rerates basically will raise us about fifteen hundred dollars per month and give us no increased services. This new contract will give us redundancy and diversity at all the sites. So if we go down at our center, the system will still stay up. So everybody that's a satellite agency, you know, Warren, Niles, Howland, all, all those agencies will still stay up. It's also a requirement for the state as the net core services, which is coming down the pipeline. I hate saying it that way because it's been coming down the pipeline for seven years, so, but they're finally making a little progress there with the NG nine one one services, where they're going to require, require dual connections, diverse paths, geodiverse and redundancy. So that will meet that qualification. So since we are basically going to have to be forced into paying more just automatically rerates anyway, we went ahead and, and looked at updating us. This is something Roger had looked at prior to me getting here that he had wanted to move towards and he, I had him take a look at it one day when he was doing some radio stuff, so he's aware of it. That's what that would end up doing for us and it would get rid of our existing bright speed links that we have at, at I believe, Warren and Niles and replace them with Lumen all the way around. So we have one probe to choke as far as vendors to deal with.
Yeah.
And as long as you guys are, are good with that and there's no big questions, I won't be at the meeting tomorrow because I have another meeting tomorrow at the same time, so.
Think you've answered everything.
Yeah, yeah, I think so, too, and this is something we have to do.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tacey.
Sorry to put you on the hot seat, but that's why we brought you here is to clear this stuff up, so you're tough. Twenty-two, authorize Denny Malloy, President of Board of Chamois County Commissioners to execute the PY twenty twenty-five Ohio Department of Youth Services Juvenile Court Funding Application Update and authorize Chamois County Juvenile Court to submit the application update to Ohio Department of Youth Services. The funding application update request will be for the biennial period beginning July one and ending June thirty, twenty twenty-five. Estimated base and variable allocation for fiscal year twenty twenty-five is one million fifteen thousand four oh three. Special note, at such a time, Chamois County does not receive funding, the Board of Chamois County Commissioners has no obligation to fund this program. Anyone here from Juvenile Court?
Tacey just got Juvenile Court, so this is our-
Come on up here, Tacey.
So this is our, this is our annual subsidy application, which funds our juvenile programming program.
Okay, thank you very much. Twenty-three, approve the personnel action for the employment of a total of three candidates, two positions for the Chamois County Department of Job and Family Services and one position for Chamois County Child Support Support Enforcement Agency. Candidates receive full benefits and serve nine-month probationary period for Department of JFS and Child Support Enforcement Agency. And it is Maintenance Repair Worker Donald Fellows, India Howard Clerical Specialist Three, and then CSCA is Benjamin Washington. Don?
Yes, Mr. John Gargano, JFS. A few weeks ago when I was here, I told you that we would be going through this of hiring people and that's what we're doing right now. There's been movement, there's been retirement and as in the maintenance, there's two, the two individuals, they have moved into other positions, so we're low in maintenance and we're having the clerical specialist come in because of that retirement and also with Benjamin Washington at CSCA. As Tacey, although my people don't get into those severe emergency situations, I have people that really don't understand the job and we're trying to fill those positions and as we go into them and we bring these people in, they don't realize what the job actually entails. Not to their extent, but we do get people on the phone that are irate because you're, you're stopping their, their assistance or you need this or you need that. So they're always getting those phone calls and plus they're under a time constraint to do these things, to determine eligibility and things like that. And we're going through this, as I went in today, I thought we were going to be able to catch up, but today I had one retirement and two resignations come to my desk early this morning that two of them were in probation, but they don't like the job, they don't, they don't, the stress for them is not what they thought it would be. So they are leaving, they found another job with some more pay. So this is going to be a continuation for us, too, as time goes on and we're trying to fill them as quickly as we can. We just had a group of nine that started this last week, I should say. So we're going to be going through this, just like Tacey and nine one one.
It just amazes me because, I mean, growing up since I was a little kid, you know, I had a lot of family members who worked service, you worked, you worked county jobs. You did things, that was like good benefits, good pay. You work it, you retire it and you raise your family on it. And here's so many stories of people that are just walking away from county employment, really is an eye-opener that people don't want to work a career job with good benefits, that they're willing to-
The younger people don't really look at the benefits, even though we try to impress upon them the benefits, but they're looking for the cash in their pockets now and that's what they're looking at. And as soon as they come in, we already know that there's going to be four or five that are already looking for that other job, even though they're in probation here, they have a nine-month probation because you got to deal with all the regulations and the laws and the different programs and understanding them. So they don't want to do that, so they're just there temporarily and like the two that I got this morning, they don't want to do it, they found a job that pays more money and that's what they're off to.
Amazing. Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, again, this was a retirement that I, I had indicated before. My administrator was retiring, there's, it was an opening. People were interviewed and Lisa Mattis was the one that was selected to take that position. And if that's approved, then we have her position that she's presently in will have to be then posted.
Okay. And twenty-five, to enter in a contract with Dawn Incorporated for the new restroom building upgrade project located Veteran Services Center located at East Market Street in the amount of fifty-two thousand seven ten. This action recommendation of Bill Hart, Building Maintenance Supervisor. They came in at fifty-two seven ten, Sabo was sixty-seven eight eighteen. There was a lower bid, Coats Construction forty-eight two seventy-five. We discussed that last week somewhat.
Yes, sir.
And, and you were going to research into the response of- And, uh, and you were gonna research into the response of, did they already apply something earlier? And they just decided that they were, they thought that was enough? Were they reached out to or, or did they, you know, what happened here with this? And why are we going with the bid that's, that's not the lowest, I guess? And I, there's a lot of people wondering about that.
Bill Hart, Chamo County Maintenance, um, I reached out to Herm Brewer, the Director of the Veterans Affair next to me, uh, and asked him about what Coats Construction submitted, uh, as suggested two years ago or so. Um, he researched back to me and gave me information that the same stuff he submitted this time around was exactly the same he submitted in last year's proposal. Um, Herm here, who came to, uh, tell you what, he showed each contractor that showed up, each scope of work that they were supposed to give description on, and Coats just failed to do any of that. So Herm is here to discuss that end. So I reached out to Herm last week.
Yeah, this project, uh, Herm Brewer, Chamo County Veterans Service Commissioners Project, um, in two thousand fourteen, when the building was built, there was a, um, cost-saving revision that removed the portico and removed restrooms that were on the office side of the building versus the public side of the building. Uh, when they were removed, it was, they were removed after the plumbing was installed, um, and all, and the doors were installed on the restrooms. So we had two vacant restrooms on the office side of the building. We determined during COVID that it would have been nice to have those restrooms on the office side of the building. Um, so that's when we started the conversation, uh, with Philip Secanic about, um, producing, um, some revisions to the building. Now that we'd been in it for five years, Secanic did that work for us pro bono. Um, in April of last year, um, after the maintenance department here said that they would not be able to facilitate the project, um, I reached out to Bill and asked Bill for the recommendation of contractors that were county, uh, vendors already. Um, so he, he provided me with three names. Um, we were at that point under the assumption that the bids were gonna come in under the fifty thousand dollar state recommendation for the open bid process, and we were hopeful of that. So I met personally with, uh, Mike Coats, Mike Haddel. Um, Mike is actually a Marine Corps vet, and I'm familiar with Mike, um, and we have a pretty good rapport. So Mike did a walkthrough, Steve Ballant from Dawn did a walkthrough, and, uh, uh, James Bayer from the Salvo did a walkthrough. All three of them were instructed that we were hopeful that this would come in under the fifty thousand dollar threshold so that we didn't have to do the open bid project. All three returned quotes in April of last year, um, and you've heard those, and I have a copy of all that were submitted. Um, Coats's, uh, quote came in and it was a one-page and it just said, this is the amount. Um, I have all of the emails between myself and Coats, I have all the emails between myself and Dawn, and all the emails between myself and the Salvo. Um, and it seems that the quotes that were provided by the other two contractors went into some pretty significant detail. They were all provided the same information and same opportunity in which to bid. Uh, because one of the bids was below fifty thousand dollars, I was, uh, referred back to the prosecutor's office. So I have a prosecutor's opinion that said that we would still have to follow the, um, the open bid process so that we would have to go out then and put it out for public bid. Um, that was in June of twenty twenty-three, when I got that opinion back from Assistant Prosecutor Danzo. Um, in that, he said essentially that, um, since one is just under that threshold, that, and if there would be the likelihood that there would be cost overruns, then we would be not compliant with the auditor of the state. Um, so then he suggested that we go back and do the, um, the, the open bid process. Of course, last year, that threshold changed from fifty thousand to seventy-five thousand, which then meant that if we went and simply re-quoted with the same three vendors, um, you guys could make the selection as to who, whom it would be. Went back and asked all three vendors to provide, again, another, uh, updated quote, and all three complied. Um, but again, you've seen all of the, uh, quotes, because I have a copy of all the quotes as to what they were. Um, again, that's, that's exactly how this all works, so. Got any questions?
What, when Coats was reached out to the second time, did they, were they told that it had to be a detailed?
Well, I'm, I'm not a contractor, so all I was doing was saying, I need a quote, you know? So here's the, here's the other issue, is that because I am also familiar with the estimator, I felt if I was giving him any more information, that then I would be under scrutiny because all of a sudden the person that I knew that was doing the bidding also was, was, uh, the one in consideration. So I wanted this to be as completely transparent as possible. All of the due diligence was followed in this effort. If they didn't follow through with a detailed estimate, that's not my responsibility.
No, I understand.
Mr. Taylor? So Jim Taylor, Vice President of Western Reserve Building Trades. Uh, so agents and myself have questions, concerns, comments. Um, in your statement, and, and, and I think you did a great job, and, and, and by no means do I wanna take away all the work that you've done. But I never heard the word requirement of a scope of work. Um, you know, someone can throw in a kitchen sink and we can say, well, nobody else threw in a kitchen sink. Well, it wasn't required either. So I guess whenever we get into it, you gotta understand, was the requirement in the request for bid? And if it was requirement for scope, in my, unless it's a design build, in my experience, it has been the architect who comes up with the scope of work. Now, if it's a scope of work from Secanic and you want them to reiterate the scope of work, I, I don't know where that comes in. So I guess there were some of my questions on it. And my comment would be, been an agent for twelve years, I've sat in a lot of these projects. We've had issues with, um, less qualified contractors. We've had, uh, contractors, um, you know, non-compliant or whatever. They have, they have got awarded work because they were the lowest bidder. And every time I hear, always the lowest bidder, 'cause you don't need legal issues. Um, so that would be one of my comments. I've never seen that happen in my, my history.
Is the scope of work, um, detailed by Philip Secanic?
Is that, so you have a scope of work by the architect, so to me, it's redundant to ask for a contractor to give you the scope of work. They gotta follow the scope of work as per the architect. So I guess whenever, in most invoices, it's always been, listen, labor, material, you know, uh, overhead, whatever it might be, this is my invoice, this is my price. So it'd be my, um, ask that the commissioners reject this award. Awarded to the lowest bidder, move on with the project.
Because the scope of work is already
Defined in
Defined by the architect.
Yeah.
And the contractor probably was under that impression that, you know,
I got a scope of work, I follow the scope of work.
That's it.
Unless there's changes in that, and there's always, there may be changes and that's fine.
Right.
But.
Uh, Justin Orient, Central Midwest Regional Council of Contractors. Um, I did follow up with, uh, Mike Coats Construction last week, um, and they were under the impression that they did follow the specifications for the project and they submit their bid on, on, on that. So, um, that's what they submit their bid.
But we wouldn't have known that. How do we have known that they submitted their bid on it, just other than a number and a procurement policy?
Well, like you said, you add the architect, if it has, here's the scope of work and
It's already
And Herm walked them through and said, give us your price, here's what needs done. What, what is it, you, we already know what needs done.
Right.
And, and as long as they're doing what needs done, as, as Herm walked them all through equally, of here's what needs done, here's what the architect had plans for, this is what we don't wanna complete. Then I kinda see, I, I gotta agree somewhat that
I agree.
The scope of work is already detailed and
Yes.
We're, we're giving them the scope of work, we're just asking them for what their price is. And it seems like maybe two of them reiterated the same scope of work, which maybe Mike Coats could have done.
It shouldn't be penalized for
But I think he's right, he's, the requirement, it was saying required to give us your scope of work and the price. It was, give us your price for, here's what we need done.
Right.
If I go in and say, hey, I need a mechanic or whatever and say, I need new muffler, I'm not gonna have him look under the car and say exactly what do I need if I know that's what I already need. I already had a guy look at it and I'm just getting bids or, you know, who's gonna give me the best price. I already know what the scope of work is.
Right. And just because they're not reiterating the scope of work doesn't mean that they should be penalized for that, especially when they're the lowest bidder, in my opinion.
Just, just have one more comment. Um, in there, there are things that are required. Uh, performance bond, builder's risk insurance permits, um, so, and then we're all checkmarked on that information that was sent out, so.
So they all hit that part?
They hit the requirements as per though.
With the information that we have, I think we, we need to, uh, award the bid to Coats for being the lowest, in my opinion.
Let me check with the prosecutor before we make a decision on that. Do you have any input, Mr. Danzo, in regards to if we award the lowest bid? Being that, and this is something too, we don't have to, we could technically pick the highest bid on this because it isn't under seventy-five thousand. We wanted to. So, so we're not required
But I'm comfortable
Pick the lowest bid.
The information that we have now that we're, we're doing our due diligence.
Phil Danzo from the prosecutor's office, I'll just talk loud, hopefully, enough that hopefully everybody can hear. But, uh, the bottom line is because it's a project that is under that seventy-five thousand dollar threshold, they went out, they obtained three quotes, which is the normal county's procedure in this. And it's the discretion of the board, which, which one is the best. Uh, and, and again, you know, this isn't following the traditional bidding process of lowest and best and all that kind of technical requirement. This is, who do the commissioners believe is the, the, the firm that's the, that has provided the, the best bid, uh, or the best quote? And if, if the board believes it's Dawn, if the board believes it's Coats, the Salvo, that, that's really your call. Uh, you know, as long as obviously you're, you're gonna try to compare them the best you can, apples to apples, and make sure that you're, you're doing your, uh, you know, due diligence on the research that way. But ultimately, it's the board's call.
Like when it comes down to that, you can't default it for going with the lowest bid. It is the lowest bid, so.
Well, I, I guess when we're using someone else's scope of duties too. If we're trusting the architect, each company may use different supplies, different suppliers, there's, so there may be price cost overruns. And that, that's the only thing that concerns me here is
Could be on hold.
Is it really the lowest bid or is it not the really lowest bid? Because we're not really looking to see in that essence of apples to apples in a sense as far as
Could be overruns on any of them.
And that was the only concern was that, you know, I don't wanna be the one to have to come back and go, okay, there's cost overruns. So although we want the lowest bid, now we're up over the next bid, so that's the only
Or, you know, hey, these, these guys use the cheapest toilets they make, you know, at Walmart or Menards or whatever, and these guys use nice Kohler or whatever with nice faucets and, you know, there's, that concerns me a little bit too.
But there could be cost overruns with any of them.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's what it comes down to, it doesn't matter.
Who did most of the work initially on the place?
Who built the place?
It was Hudson.
The Hudson, Mike Coats.
I worked on the project myself
Yeah.
when I was in the field, so, um, it was built by Hudson Construction.
Yep, and they never put a bid in to complete it?
Not, no, they didn't. Yeah, that would have been done by a sub anyway, yeah.
I got, I got, Tony Delly again, Western Reserve Building Trades. You know, we've been arguing like the last three years on the lowest and best, even though we're under the threshold. Now you got the lowest, and in my opinion, we didn't give you reports. We've been giving you guys reports on contractors. Now they got the lowest, now you're fighting to, because you're worried about the
That's right.
What happened to all the lowest bids you guys gave and all the changeovers that brought it up above the quote? I, I don't understand
I'm not disagreeing with you.
I don't understand what's going on here.
I was the only one who heard that.
I mean, I don't understand what's going on here. Because we, you guys gave it to the lowest, your, your path is the lowest, nobody cared about the best. And the change orders came in that brought it above all those quotes.
And that's
And now we're giving it to the lowest and in my opinion, one of the best on the, on the bid docs, on the, on the contractor's bidding, and now we're, now we're worried about change orders all of a sudden, or, or, or standards.
Have you guys seen these quotes?
Huh?
Have you guys seen the quotes?
Yeah, it's, it's just, it's just crazy to me, that's all
Four thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars. I got, I'm ready to proceed with, uh, the lowest, the lowest quote.
I think that's the precedent we kinda set, and if that's what we are, um, it'd be harder to justify why we didn't follow what
I agree.
We probably should be doing.
But in, in the future, let's consider, let's still consider them the best, okay? And not the lowest, due to the fact, so let's do a, let's do a study on this. Let's see if Mike Coats comes in with some change orders that brings it to
Keep an eye
Even past Dawn or close to the Salvo, let's, let's see what, what comes in and, and, and go from there. So, you know, build on, on what we're talking about.
Jim Taylor with the Western Reserve Building Trades. And I'd also like to say, you know, whenever we factor these things in there, let's, let's factor in past practice of jobs.
Sure.
Um, you know, if there was any prevailing wage violations, um, you know, some of these, you know, cost overruns, if any be, um, let's factor in that, OSHA violations that make it unsafe for workers. So I think them are all things that we look at, you know, we wanna make sure that everybody goes to work, gets a job done, goes unsafe to their families.
And I think the biggest thing for us too is if we had a contractor that did shoddy work and they come in lowest again, we gotta keep that in mind. I don't know that we've ever had shoddy work from any of these three. I've been here long enough, I've never dealt with any of these companies.
All reputable.
For saying, you know, on a project yet, um, or firsthand from, you know, start to finish. Um, so I guess I would give the benefit of the doubt of, yeah, if they're, they're the lowest, let's see if they're
I'd like to add something to that too. Uh, also, you know, with Mike Coats Construction, the Salvo Construction, um, they use state accredited apprenticeship programs, which also is, uh, incorporated with, um, helmets to heart hats, if you're familiar with the program, which takes veterans, it gives them the opportunity through direct entry.
What, what veterans on a veteran's building?
And I know for a fact that Mike Coats has some veterans working on, you know, in the trade.
The estimator was one of my veterans.
Well, Mike, and, and Herm, I do appreciate too, you using your professional discretion to not let that taint the process. And when he, and, and in this instance, it probably could have a little bit.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
If it was, if it was veteran involved.
Yeah, I mean, Mike built the statue in front of our building, you know, so, uh, you know, and, and I was the one to reach out to them. So when I saw that it wasn't very elaborate, I was like, ooh, I hope that doesn't go over the fifty thousand because if it does, then we're gonna do the bid, you know, so. It is what it is.
So do we have to, uh, readjust this tomorrow and just interchange the name on this?
I'd be in favor of that.
And, and the numbers will work out.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks, Herm.
Thanks.
Thank you guys for your input. Number twenty-six. Execute letters of support to Senator Sandy O'Brien and Senator Matt Dolan in support of the Bloomfield Township Trustees' request for an addition to the regional EMF Fire Station, which was included in House Bill Two and is now in the Senate for discussion. And authorize Danny Malloy, President of Board of Chamo County Commissioners, to execute said letters on behalf of the board.
Roger? Roger Peterson, Bloomfield Township Trustee. This is a project that I've been trying to push uphill for quite some time now. Uh, it made it through the House, it's still in discussion in the Senate, and I'm hoping that some letters of support might help, uh, get this through. Sandra O'Brien, obviously, is our senator. Uh, Matt Dolan is the chairman of the committee that's making the final decision. So that's why I asked to include Senator Dolan in the request. It's, it's
No problem with that.
No problem with that at all.
I appreciate it, I appreciate it.
Hopefully it helps.
I hope, I hope. And then if there's ever any nudging movement on our, our request from two thousand and seven, because we're the first, remember? That's a joke.
Two thousand and seven, I'm
Sorry, sorry.
Going way back.
I know, I know, but no, we
I know you're
Yeah, you know where I'm at, yeah, yeah. If there's ever any nudging on that, we, we do appreciate it, so.
So are you providing a letter for us to sign? Is that something we're gonna generate a
We're ready to go.
Okay, it's good?
They're ready to go.
Perfect.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, great. Twenty-seven. To appoint someone as a member of the Chamo County Children's Services Board for one three-year term commencing January one and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. This will be, um, to replace the late Sister Jean Orsuda. We have applicants?
We have three applicants, I believe.
We have three to look at?
We have the folders.
Okay.
Um, I, I did, Sister Jean is, is, uh, is not only a wonderful, you know, board member, but obviously just a phenomenal, uh, exceptional person, uh, human being. Um, but, but her seat is vacant and we have three applicants. I saw, uh, I don't have them in front of me, I, I apologize, but, um, I know that there's, uh, all three are very qualified. Um, I believe two of which have master's degrees, one in, uh, business administration. Um, I believe two of which have master's degrees, one in, uh, business administration, one in education. I believe the one that has a, I, I take that back.
I'll tell you, do you have the packet, Lisa, can you grab it?
Yeah.
Let's just catch it here now, because last week we were kinda.
The, the reason why I'm leaning toward Ms. Ruggieri is because she has a, uh, she has a bachelor's degree in education and a master's degree in, uh, counseling, specifically children. Um, so, I mean, it, it kind of fits along with that, and, uh, but, but three very good candidates, after I looked at them yesterday.
And like I said, last week was a little bit odd, because we pointed someone, it was pretty much, we had to look at them on the desk, and it was, uh.
Probably not the best way to do it.
Probably not the best way to do it, and I'm sure we made a good pick, I'm sure they're all three of them are good picks, but, um, anyone that wants to volunteer, I mean, it's hard enough to get employees.
Oh, yeah.
We had more than enough people volunteering for this position, which is great.
And I think at least two of them are retired, if not all three, so they can devote the time.
Okay.
I've looked at them, maybe give them the demo. I don't remember all of it offhand, but I remember some of them.
I just, I, I looked at them, I just want to review. Hey, one is an engineer.
Yes.
One is director of physician services.
Currently or retired?
Pardon me?
Currently or retired?
Uh, that's that Christine Ruggieri, present. She's Director of Physician Services at Mercy Health.
Okay, yeah, that's right.
Um.
But her, but her degree is in counseling, is this what they, remember seeing them?
Counseling and communications.
Okay, yeah, I looked at the wrong one.
Then the third gentleman. Third gentleman we need to consider somewhat too, he's a school board member in Weathersfield, and he is the head right now of the Human Trafficking Task Force from northeast Ohio. So he handles situations with young children, young women especially, that are brought into prostitution, and, uh, he's getting ready to retire from that, and he's looking for how he's gonna serve the community when he's done. But he has extensive service, starting as a police officer in Youngstown, and finishing up as a homeland security agent for VCI. But he, uh, especially his child exploitation, drug smuggling, money laundering.
Wow, okay.
Things like that, and it'd been, he's on the Mahoning Valley Human Trafficking Task Force, um, focusing on exploitation of vulnerable and minor victims. That might be a huge asset to Children's Services, to have somebody like that with a law enforcement background that knows.
Agreed.
Um. Yeah, I do remember seeing this and looking into that, and, uh.
Three very good. Three very good candidates.
It is three very good candidates.
Well, we can.
If it's all right with you, Commissioner, I'd like to call the candidates and talk a little bit more, when we make this decision.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, yeah, for sure.
Because this does throw a curveball into things.
Absolutely.
Having that background, especially with all the talk, um, that we have with human trafficking, with all the stuff that's been in the news lately.
Right.
Um, this might be an asset that we've never had on the board before.
No, yeah, I understand.
Someone who's on the inside that knows how this works, when they, when they're seeing things coming into Children's Services, you may have more familiarity, signs to look for, even to instruct the, the directors and stuff there, and educate the whole board on the gullible stuff.
I don't have a problem with that. No, I think that's, that's wise. Let's do that.
Let's do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
There was no rubric available for this, by the way.
Yeah.
Letting you know, locate one.
Well, that's gonna be tough, man, that would be tough anyway.
We can create a, each, each of us can create our own rubric, I guess.
Right. Yeah, that's a, that's a tough call on that one. Okay. Twenty-eight, adopt resolution for the Board of Tormal County Commissioners to authorize payment of county funds to DLZ, Ohio Inc., in the amount of thirty thousand for partial payment for warrant officer's agreement for professional services for Levensburg Dam desktop study regarding the Tormal County Metro Parks Levensburg Dam removal project. So this is just the formality written by the attorney on how we, uh, how we do this, okay?
Martha, you're the Tormal County Auditor, it is missing fund numbers, um, they have been emailed to Lisa by Christine.
So they'll be added on here?
Yes.
Okay.
Hey, Commissioner, before we get into the next one, I'd like to make a motion to recess just for a couple of minutes.
Yes, that'd be good.
I need to, I need to talk to the attorney, but I second on text.
That's fine.
Before we discuss this, the attorney wants me to call before we publicly discuss this executive session measure. Um, and just give me, give me about five minutes, three to five minutes to.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
Your favor?
Lisa?
Hi.
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 Motion to reconvene from executive session, or from, uh...
Yes.
Break?
Second motion.
Mr. Councilor Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes. Okay, Commissioner. Um, number twenty-nine...
Yes.
...to enter an executive session to confer with an attorney pending, pending, and imminent court actions, and then thirty is to reconvene. This is an executive session just for you and I to get an update on pending legal matters that involve, uh, you and myself and, uh, common police court.
Okay.
And to confer with our attorney, uh, in regards to the status update of where we are in, in regards to, uh, meeting that he had recently, um, with the judge. So that's something for you and I only to discuss our pending stuff, um, followed by another commissioner.
Okay.
So it'll be an executive session for you and I only with the counsel that we hired, uh, in regards to that.
Okay.
Uh, okay. Then thirty-one is, uh, uh, I would like to make the recommendation to appoint, um, Attorney Brody Conover et al. and Ricker Grayden LLP pursuant to RC three oh nine oh nine C and RC three oh five one four B as counsel for Trumbull County Human Resources to provide legal counsel, advice, and consulting relative to an ADA request submitted to their department. There was a, a letter from a prosecutor that there was an ADA request made by, made to that department, and the prosecutor can't answer that question, and he, he, in that letter he submitted to all three commissioners was to, uh, advise HR they need to find outside counsel this, or, uh, which they did contact CCAO and they did contact...
Clemens Nelson.
Clemens Nelson, and Clemens Nelson both declined to answer the question and said they need to find further legal advice...
Okay.
...uh, from a firm that deals with human resources.
Okay.
Um, so I took it upon myself to call, um, Brody, I know their, their firm and being that we have a relationship, you and I have a relationship with them, I trust the firm, and, um, they do, they have a branch of their department that specializes in nothing but human resources, so I'd like to follow up on this motion. It'll be at the rate of three seventy-five an hour, uh, but it is something they have a request regarding an ADA request that they can't answer, uh, especially now being down an employee right now, um, so we, I, I'm gonna make this motion that we hire them so that they can handle whatever that ADA request thing is that...
Yep.
...uh, human resources has, and I confer with our prosecutor, uh, in regards to that, in regards to his letter, and, uh, Bill, you seem to be, and, okay, that this is the route that we go to do that, to be able to provide the legal counsel without, um, changing your office involving, um, in- involving us or, or, uh, Clemens Nelson or anyone else, that this is the route that, that's probably best served for HR to handle.
Sure. Any request we can. Still, also from the prosecutor's office, this is a, a question that's come up and that happens with HR from time to time. In this case, though, we do have a conflict with our office, so that's why we have recommended, like we often do in most cases, um, just to have outside counsel for the HR department, for the board to help answer it, that's all.
Okay. So...
Yeah, I have no problem with it.
I'll be making that motion then.
Yep.
Okay, that concludes our, our, um...
Mike Fowinski, Trumbull County Building Official. Commissioners, we have three vehicles in the building inspection department. One of them has been down since the beginning of the year. Maintenance is letting us use their vehicle, which is great, but, but we need to, we need a replacement vehicle. This is the same one I, I brought up at the budget hearing. The problem is we don't have an appropriation at the building inspection department, so I don't need any approval now. All I want, uh, from you gentlemen is, is permission to discuss this with Martha's staff so we can figure out where, where we can get the money so that I could bring it to you in the form of a journal entry as a request for replacement vehicle with the appropriate funding mechanism in place.
I, I hundred percent approve. I've seen your vehicles you have over there. I've talked to the employees that drive your vehicles. I can't believe they're driving hand-me-downs like that, especially when they're going out into the public, and they're going into some affluent neighborhoods to look at building permits and stuff, and they come rolling up in this jalopy tone, like, "You can't do this again."
Well...
It just, it's...
That, and that's the one that's broke down that, that literally vehicle maintenance red-tagged that says, "You're not driving this vehicle."
Yeah, it just doesn't look good on our department or the county as a whole when, uh...
Yeah.
When we look like, you know, yeah, discount mark dollar store, uh, service or providers and...
And, and, and we have been looking for vehicles and, and, and so what I have here is just, you, you can try to see what we've done, uh...
We need the four, four-wheel drive, though, obviously.
Well, the one we're proposing is not four-wheel drive, it's an all-wheel drive, but it's close enough to get us off-site.
Okay.
You know, I mean, you know, our guys can, you can't expect them to walk, you know, like, like the Altium site, we were parking, you know, half a mile from the project, and, you know, they actually gave us golf carts to use, which was kinda nuts, but, but many times, new homes, whatever, you know, they're off the roadway, we can't, we need a vehicle that can get out there. Um, Bill's guys have let us, uh, use, you know, one of their vehicles to, to replace, uh, we can't just keep doing that, we need our own vehicle, you know. We looked at the other vehicles, it's, you know, it's shocking to see what the cost of these used trucks is, and, and, and the replacement vehicle that we were, that we found, you know, the first challenge was we, no one had 'em, uh, with the help of Bill, Valley Truck, he's, he's purchased from them before, it's a two thousand twenty-four Ford Maverick is what, you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's a low-budget vehicle, it's not four-wheel drive, it is all-wheel drive, it's a smaller vehicle, uh, it would fit our needs, we need to get that inspector to that job and, and maybe go off-road in a limited capacity, and we're not taking these things down the Yankee Lake truck night, we're just, we just need to get, you know, onto the job, so I think an all-wheel drive will help us out and give us the capabilities we need.
Valley's a state contractor.
And Valley's...
So these are lower than state purchasing?
Well, Valley is, Valley is, is the, the thirty-seven six fifteen, is a new twenty-twenty-four on-state purchasing price. The other ones are just, are, are not state purchasing, they're just what's avai- what we were found available from the local vendors.
Is the Clavon model used, or is that just a...
Yeah, those are all used, yes, those are all used.
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't know if it was just on the lot and they didn't sell it or...
Yeah, well, we've been looking for vehicles, you know.
Yeah.
The only one we actually rejected is, they brought back one, it was like a candy apple red, and I says, "No, I don't, we're not doing that, we're not doing..."
Red?
It was like a bright red.
Yeah.
It wouldn't look... It wouldn't look good.
So what, what are you asking here, Mike?
So what I'm asking for is just tacit permission to, to work with Martha's staff to figure out how we're gonna fund this. And then I will come back. I will come back with a journal entry request that has the vehicle that we want and the funding mechanism in place. Right now, we don't have any funding mechanism in place for the vehicle.
But if, if you're looking at these others that are not state contract, it's on apples for apples because they're not new. Is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
I'm saying that's what's out there.
Okay.
You know, we, we have been looking. That's what's available. That's, this is what we found. And we can support all this with documentation. But as a summary, look, this is what we want to spend, you know, and, and these vehicles are a couple of years old. It, you know, and that's the money we're spending, you know, we need to capitalize on the, the purchase power of the state purchasing to get a, a newer vehicle, twenty-twenty-four at that price.
Well, especially for three or four thousand dollars more.
Right. Where's Valley Trucks at?
On the other side of Akron.
The, the only thing I, I was thinking here is I, I know, just personally, my, my dad has purchased a, a vehicle from, uh, Toyota of Warren.
I don't know if they're state purchasing, are they?
I don't know. That's the only thing I'm just saying. If, if there's anyone to look up. And I mean, he got a, he got a four-wheel drive, brand-new Tacoma for thirty-seven, which is, if it's a local company.
Oh, yeah.
If there is something, if they are state purchasing, I would prefer we buy in-house from one of our local dealers somewhere. But it doesn't. You know, this is the lowest. That's fine. We'll save money too, but.
We're not fixated on that Ford Maverick. We'll, we'll take anything.
I saw that Mr. Danzo have had numerous conversations on the state purchasing contracts. It's just crazy. And now they're changing to Ohio buys and we don't even know how that's gonna affect anything. So, um, yeah, I'll research that and, and see.
Yeah, what's on there? Just, I mean, when you look through one of the, since you're not at that stage yet anyway, I would, I would look to see. I would say new rather than used at the price range that you're in.
Yes, definitely.
Um, and if, and if you don't need a bigger one, if it's a smaller one, I, you know, personally, I'd like to see our county buy from people within our county. Um, but.
Have you looked at new with Clayman, Clayman and Martin and Montra?
No, we were looking what was on the lot, what we could get, what we didn't look at new.
The new could be, could be state purchasing.
Well, I, I don't know what vehicles are on the state purchasing list for this year.
There's only, there's only two companies that I found for Chevy, Ford is Valley and, um, there's a Montra, I think maybe. I, I can't remember.
A lot of the local companies don't want to deal with state purchasing and sell them at a discounted rate because they can sell them at a higher rate.
But a lot of times you can, you can find something under state purchase. I mean, new too, just depends.
Yeah, well, this.
They have them on the lot.
I, I guess this is, this is what we found to date.
Okay.
How's that? Now, this is what we've been making calls, getting, you know, seeing what's out there. This is what's out there. This is the cost. These are all similar vehicles, similar, uh, 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 similar make, model. And this is the cost that's associated with those vehicles.
If we were to look at the beginning of the year, there's an ordering, you could order a vehicle, no hard Trumbull County man. You could order a vehicle, but it has to be done before a certain timeframe and then they cut you off. So I was looking at a plain Jane, just, you know, power windows, radio and four-wheel drive. That's all they need. You know, air conditioner, of course. But, um, that had came and gone for ordering.
Bill, I'd also look, look at Jeep Cherokee type vehicles too, Jeep Patriots, because they're made in Ohio. And we do have some dealers in the county that do own Jeeps.
There is a Jeep company that's state purchasing. I just gotta look them up.
Um.
I don't know if Greenwood's.
If you're not hauling ladders and things like that in the back, I, I think a Jeep for the purposes of what you're doing looks professional too.
I'll research and throw that out to Mike.
One other thing?
Yes, sir.
Um, so Sue, we've been working with our county engineer's office on the Portland Garage, the design-build project. So, so I had hoped to bring you some, some news that we had, we had picked the, the, uh, the, the, the successful bidder. We have not. We, we, we had interviews last Friday and, and they were very well. They went off, all three went off well. The, the, the selection committee, three individuals, they stayed and discussed it. They were gonna meet Monday morning to make a final decision. There was a medical emergency they couldn't meet. So they're gonna, they postponed it. They're gonna meet tomorrow morning. So as soon as they know, uh, and they make their selection, then I'll, I'll let you know.
So there are two members in the engineer's office on there, right?
There's two members in the engineer's office with the criteria and architect is, is the selection committee.
Okay.
And they're ready. I discussed it with Gary Jafer and Joe.
Okay.
They're ready to make that decision.
Yeah, we gotta get moving on that. There's nobody more anxious to do that than the county engineers.
Yeah, yeah, they, yeah.
As long as these people are involved and the delay involves, somebody's people takes the heat off of.
And, and through the interview process, we had, we had three good interviews. We discussed it with all three design-build firms. You know, we laid out the, the project, uh, uh, completion date. You know, we vetted all that very well through the interview process. It was, and they, and they were good interviews.
Okay.
So we'd love to have a decision on that.
Yeah, I'll be happy when that decision's done and eventually we, the, the garage is done.
Mike, getting back to the trucks.
Yes.
This was years ago and prior to COVID and all that, but we used that enterprise lease program at one time.
We looked at that.
Did you look at it?
We did.
I'm just, I know that, I know that that's changed because of everything, but it was a very good program.
It was a very good program, but they, 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 they wanted us to lease like an F three fifty. You know, they, they didn't want so small, they didn't.
Commissioner, also, we're using our vehicles for like nineteen years and passing them on down. We're, we're getting every, we're getting every dollar out of these vehicles.
But you would get, you would be able to trade in and then use that money and basically not pay for a lease.
Yes.
For, and it would keep doing that. So you'd have a car all the time. You'd just pay for the initial lease. But all that money, the residual value that was in the lease would go towards your next, uh,
That's right.
You, it was a great program, but lease, leases have changed.
Yeah, and they didn't want to talk to us because we, you know, we, I mean, they didn't even want an F one fifty, you know, let alone like a Ranger. You know, we wanted smaller, fuel-efficient trucks. They didn't want none to do it, my department. We met with them numerous times. They just, because it was.
Doing due diligence, you know.
It was a great deal.
It was.
Right.
Anyway, I wanted to bring that up.
So next week we'll have a recommendation.
We're gonna have a revision. Yeah, that's right.
Okay. I'm gonna hold you to that. That one's on you, Mike, next week.
It didn't, I, I, they're gonna meet.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Sir?
Scott Bauer, Fire Chief, Sutherland Township. I spoke with Audrey O'Grady. I applied for our funds. Um, we were lucky enough to get it. That would provide us a hundred and sixty-five thousand for a new ambulance. Sutherland is the busiest all-volunteer fire department in Trumbull County that transports. And our budget dates back to nineteen seventy-six, so obviously with COVID and increasing cost of vehicles, that kind of, new vehicles aren't in the cards for us. Uh, so this would allow us to purchase a new ambulance and that price does include trading in our old one to reduce the cost of a new vehicle. We also talked to the dealer and this would include taking our cot and load system from our previous ambulance and putting it into the new one as a cost-saving measures. And then our township has committed for the radios installation, traffic control, ambulance devices and the, um, graphics on the unit.
Auditor, do we have any requests from Sutherland or what, what do we have? Nothing at all from Sutherland?
I have to look it up, but I don't see.
I do believe this would be the first request.
Yeah, I don't think, I think, I don't think.
I don't remember Sutherland anymore.
Yeah, I don't know how that was overlooked.
I can, I can research it.
I mean, they're so active in the, in the towns association and stuff. I'm, I'm very surprised. Um, I, I wholeheartedly support it and, um, I'm sorry that this is late, I guess, again. I, we did reach out to everybody. We can't blame the, the fire department for trustees not putting a request in. But it's definitely needed. That's a big segment of, of the county that you guys do serve. And like you said, uh, it's not one of our more wealthier townships, uh, budget-wise. So I, I would like to say yes and then put them at the back of the yeses and throw them in line with the other ambulances. And, um.
Agreed.
This is, uh, you know, I thank you for coming. I thank you for seeing that and catching that. And we still are, Commissioner, we still know we, we have that at least million, million and a half buffer, one point two at the worst-case scenario buffer in there. And there are some things that are getting denied and stuff. We're, we're gonna have to reapply for things. So I think we're safe in saying, you know, we're not gonna run out of funds to provide another ambulance. And, and we've done this throughout the county and this is something that, this is gonna last. I mean, how old's your ambulance now?
Well, it's going on fourteen years on our own account.
Wow.
Fourteen years. I mean, it's, it's time. I mean, I, I don't want, I don't want to be the guy that are hauling down the thing and we're broke down on the side of the road on four twenty-two waiting for a.
And then also, one other thing on the ejection well.
Yeah.
That is in Warren Township, not Sutherland.
Oh, is it?
Okay, I didn't realize.
But we have received complaints too with our township. Um, so we've reached out to a couple of agencies, but that is in Warren Township, but we are well aware of it.
It's, it's right on four twenty-two, actually.
I smell it.
Yep.
But you never know, yeah.
Yep.
Man, four more towns of landfills, ejection wells, stamper.
Yep.
Holy cow.
I know. No, I've, I've driven.
No wonder Ed Anthony's the way he is.
Yeah. I've driven by it and luckily on the day I drove by it, I, I even pulled in. Um, but I didn't smell anything that day, but when the weather changes, people say it's unbearable.
Yeah, I'm on there. We definitely smell it.
Yeah.
Commissioner, I do appreciate you going out there last week too and.
Yeah, yeah.
Looking at it firsthand and gathering the data that you did. That's, uh,
Thank you.
most helpful.
Appreciate your guys' time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Martha, we'll get with you on how to officially make your request, or did he already?
Oh, he's got it. I've got it. It's on your drive.
Perfect.
It's already there. I, it's on my, it was on my list to ask you guys this morning.
Okay. Mr. Danzo, looks like a man with a.
Yes, yes.
Plan and.
And, and this shouldn't take any more than forty-five minutes, so don't bother. I mean, it's.
Oh, boy.
Oh, yeah, he, um, yeah.
I have to eat at one forty-five.
All right.
We've got a meeting at one, so we gotta love a minute.
Okay, uh, you know, I guess, I, the squeaky wheel gets the grease, so I'm here to do some squeaking. When we put in our budget request for our, for the prosecutor's office, there were two things in there. The renovation to our conference center and our request for case management software. I was told that, uh, those were going to be taken off of our budget request and treated as capital budget request items and that the commissioners would be dealing with capital budget request after the general fund budget was approved. Um, I found out yesterday, apparently that actually is not true at all. So I'm back to re-present, uh, our budget item request because that was what was suggested to me uh, by a representative of the auditor's office. So, uh, I, I know that this is unusual. Our office doesn't often come to the board and ask for additional funding beyond our normal salaries and, and expenses. But these two items, I just wanted to bring back to the board's attention because I do really believe in them and, and our prosecutor is, uh, you know, adamant that they are things that, that we should consider. Um, as far as the conference room, I, I just, you know, to remind you guys, when this building was renovated, I believe in the nineties, uh, we were given, uh, at the time, which, what I would consider a state-of-the-art library. Uh, the, the problem is law libraries in paper form are kind of a thing of the past. And most of our research, in fact, virtually all of it now is done online, uh, by video or, or by, I'm sorry, by internet. Many of our hearings, whether it's with courts of appeal during the COVID crisis, whether it's, um, uh, hearings with the Board of Tax Appeals, the Department of Liquor Control, all of those are virtual now. A lot of the state offices, in fact, you can see the people are in their homes as they're presenting the hearings. We don't have a dedicated space in our office for that. We are doing that with little webcams still attached to our monitors. And our proposal here was basically to remove many of the bookshelves from our law library, convert that into a multi-purpose conference center. I've talked a little bit to Bill about this over the years and festered him more than I should have probably. Uh, but our proposal, we have essentially presented an approximate cost. Our proposal would be to do the, uh, redo flooring, blinds, new furniture that's aging. And then from there, almost just kind of removing the old furniture and installing the video camera. The room's not nearly as large as this one here, so we're not talking the same kind of scope that you guys did even. Just something to give us that conferencing ability and, uh, more modernized. We also do have the parole board, which is doing remote hearings now. A lot of the victims that we have testified, uh, understandably, don't necessarily want to be in public view doing that. So to have a space where they could privately come to our office to be able to present their testimony would be something that's beneficial. I know that the other one is probably sticker shock, the, uh, proposal for Matrix Software's case management system. The fact is that we are one of the only counties in the state of Ohio whose prosecutor's office does not have its own dedicated case management software. Most of our files are kept still in the old paper file format. It is causing, with, with a thousand criminal cases approximately a year, over three hundred civil files generated per year. We are facing storage problems. We are facing access problems. Um, even when we have our records go to the archive center, which is a fantastic facility, then we're going down to archives to pull hard files still. They're trying to help the best they can to digitize things. This would give us the ability to do that internally and then also to access those things internally. We've taken a field trip to Summit County who operates this system. In fact, over sixty counties now use this Matrix software uh, because it, it has a way of sort of interfacing with other counties that use it. So if we have people who are witnesses, victims, defendants in one of those counties, a lot of that information can be pulled over, shared county to county, uh, that's, you know, kind of is a helpful thing. So that's where we focused in. They are a state purchasing vendor, so there is a, you know, there's a path to do it. Again, I, I recognize on that one the sticker shock, the, the, I, I believe it was eighty thousand, ninety thousand on the, the quotes attached here, uh, ninety thousand to get started with them for software installation, training, all that kind of stuff. But we do believe that there, there would be a benefit on, on that, not from only the efficiency standpoint, but the cost-saving standpoint for the county. Right now, we are still preparing discovery in criminal cases, putting them onto CDs, DVDs, thumb drives. This also gives us the option of uploading that all to the cloud, sharing a link with the defense attorney, saying, there's all your discovery. Log in and get it, you know, off the, off the internet yourself. That saves us the cost of buying those materials, uh, saves us the time in having to record multiple CDs for different things, DVDs for different things. Also, you know, fundamentally saves time with, you know, file access, obviously. It's much easier just to type it and pull it up on the computer than it is to go searching through old files. So I, I, I recognize that you guys are not in a position probably to give an answer on this stuff right as we sit here. But I did want to bring it back to your attention and let you know, these, these are two projects that we do believe in. And as we can try to accommodate them, we'd certainly love you guys to, to, to consider it at least with whatever funding is out there to help us get moving in this direction. Because ultimately, both of these things are just technological advances that, that are almost inevitable. You know, they're, they're, they, they brought, really, they're already here. We're just, we're about ten years behind at this point.
Bill, is there any way or is there anything that where courts can attach us to the fines or, or something out of the fines that perpetrators or convicted people do that help offset some of the costs of those?
I'm glad you brought that up because Dennis wanted me to bring that up and I forgot. So no, not really through fines, uh, but what we do have, well, there's a couple of funds that our office gets, uh, through different sources. One is what we call the Law Enforcement Trust Fund. That is where we get forfeiture money sometimes from cases that are, um, you know, somebody's convicted, for example, of drug trafficking and we seize money that was involved in drug trafficking. We split that up with the law enforcement agencies. We would absolutely be happy to explore trying to find a way to use some of that money to help offset some of this. As you guys know too, we also, a couple of years ago, almost two years ago now, got a five hundred thousand dollar grant for the reduction of violent crime in Trumbull County. Uh, we are right now projecting to have a little bit of a surplus left in that. We are going to be working with our grant administrator on that to see if there's anything that we can do to shift some of the purpose of that money over. Right now, it's unknown whether they'll allow us to do that on the grant perspective. But there are a couple of other funding sources that we would be glad to try to work with you guys with the auditor's office to see if we could, you know, at least share in the cost somehow.
I, I would, I would be wholeheartedly in support of that if you can meet even a little way and look at those things.
Sure, yeah, we'd be glad to.
You do have a funding means that does come in somewhat, like you said with that. And for the taxpayers to fund this, you know, why not the bad guys to fund this to make their prosecutors be able to catch more bad guys is my first thought.
Yeah, and again, we're, we're glad, we'd be glad to look into that and, and it's just, I don't have a firm answer on it right now, but it is something that we're willing to try to do. but it is something that we're willing to try to do.
My other thought is, who the heck's gonna train Dennis Watkins on this? The guy filed his depositions in parchment and quill pen. He's a young lawyer, and now we're gonna integrate a new Matrix system in here, it's gonna be top notch by technology wise.
Honestly, I'm going to tell you, Martha here in Trumbull County, the fact that he was willing to explore this is a great step because, uh, when they came in my office and asked if I could send somebody on a field trip, I was kinda surprised by it, so.
And, and I will say, for, for a long time, what we, we tried to do is we tried to, I don't wanna say we tried to avoid to modernize, that's not the answer. We've tried to try to, we've tried to keep things status quo, try to operate our office the best we could within the, within the means that we had. We've just gotten to the point where it's hard to, it's hard to function in a lot of the ways we do as a world now without having some of the technology in place. So, uh, you know, much like the, the, uh, board using the three sixty-five portal now, which I think is a good solution too, to help streamline that process. That's what we hope to be able to do with this, so.
We've gone through some lean economic times and everybody's made that place, the bureau office included. But one thing we've always been able to do is work together.
Absolutely.
Do with courts, we did, we've done it with you.
Yeah.
And this will be something that we can do together as well, if you can help offset the cost.
Absolutely.
That makes all the much...
Yeah, no, we'd, we'd be glad to.
For us.
And again, this is another one of these, this is, these are major advancements we're making for our county commissioner. Whether it be the nine-one-one's new system of testing potential employees or it be, um, what's going on with the archives, what's going on with the IT, I mean, the stuff that we're in. Massive advancements over the last couple of years and this is all part of, this is all part of that moving forward. And, I mean, it's progress that our citizens are seeing, so there's a cost, the progress, but if we can afford it, you know, let's, let's do some good stuff.
Sure, well, what I'll do then is, I'll take this back, we'll, we'll continue on trying to figure out where we can maybe get some of this funding from and then I will come back and we'll sort of present a more concrete proposal uh, once we know kind of the numbers specifically and we'll go from there, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you, Bill.
Yep, thank you.
My turn.
Okay, your turn, Martha.
I'm gonna go as fast as I can.
Yes.
And hopefully you'll all pay, both pay attention. There's a list of approvals, denials and updates, there's nothing new from last week on that. I'm waiting to hear back from the, about the use of the tur, of the local assistance and tribal consistency fund from Attorney Rogers for that clarification. We already covered Suddington. I froze Mexico Township's request and reached out to them, uh, via Sharon Grover to try to get a different request. I've had some additional correspondence, but no new submission. Do you want to set a deadline for them to submit something new?
No, I mean, the longer they wait, they, they, they risk the chance of...
Okay. Um, I emailed Vernon regarding their questions. Um, if you'll recall, Vernon wanted to just keep submitting for the third time the road request that's been turned down twice. And I told them that we weren't going to ask the attorney to look at it again, we had clear answers on that. And I encouraged them to submit something else and I even gave them some suggestions, some that had come from Attorney Rogers, also other projects that have been approved by, for other townships. Um, I had gotten no response. We specifically gave them a deadline of May first, which is tomorrow, back on January first. Do you want to extend the deadline or do you wanna just take that frozen money off the...
I, I do, I did, I did speak with the Vernon Township trustee this last week, um, that he wants to contest. I understand, I understand.
I would've said no, but if you're saying you spoke to him and he's...
I did speak to him and he, he is working through, looking at other counties, looking at other things to try to lobby to, to Tanya. If they're working on that, until they exhaust all their stuff...
That's fine, but I'm gonna tell you, it's not, this is not, I've given them, we've done all that we can do.
Understand.
And he does, and this is the thing, he, he submitted to me the whole thing, the, the final rule stuff, right? Where it says revenue replacement.
Right.
He cannot get it into his head that revenue replacement, that revenue replacement is for the county and not for him.
Understand.
I even sent him the...
Okay, but, but I'll give him the deadline, but if he risks the same thing with Vernon Township.
Well, the deadline is tomorrow.
The money runs out before they, no, not that deadline.
All right, okay.
The, the deadline of when the money runs out, if Vernon doesn't replace what they have
All right.
and they still get a denial and we're out of money, then that's on Vern, but I wanna give him...
Let's tell him to get moving, though, let's tell him to get moving.
But you've frozen that money, so do you want me to unfreeze it?
Keep it frozen, 'cause it's still...
But if we, if we get to that point, we're gonna have money that we can't give away.
Right.
I understand that.
We'll just get him moving, just call him.
That might be the last of the money, you know, if we unfreeze it, they don't have another request, it's gonna go to somebody else.
All right, all right. Um, the, I put Alan, Helen's ambulance request and the Hubbard Township generator on the yes list. I emailed all the grant recipients and made it clear that the grant money can only be used for the express purpose listed in the approved request and agreement. In your packet, you have both the updated g- yes sheet as of this morning, you know, of course, we've changed it, and the allocated promise sheet. This is the updated bottom line mini spreadsheet, I want you to look at the bottom. Total available, we're now less than one million. With what you just asked me to add to the yes list, we are, we are less than, um, eight hundred thousand. I hope so.
That's what it is.
I'll be happy when number zero, and everybody's smiling.
But you can't.
Yeah, you're right.
You're not, you're not the ice cream man, you can't make everybody happy.
I understand.
We'd have been, we'd have been asking for revenue from citizens.
Oh, yes.
Commissioner, anything else, any of last week?
Lisa? Um, I just wanna remind you that there's a public hearing tomorrow evening at Champion High School regarding the state red water regionalization project.
Okay.
I wanted to remind you that it's at...
What time is that at?
That's at seven.
Okay, at Champion High.
Yes. And also, Commissioners, I did receive a request from the third Commissioner to leave my meeting file out. And I just wanna clarify, this is not my personal meeting file that I go and look through, this is the office record.
The official record, the official original?
Yes, and it contains originals. I'm not gonna just leave it out.
Yeah, leave it... When you say leave it out, you mean leave it out after work hours?
Yes.
Well, unfortunately, she's had, she's left things out in the past and they've been defaced.
Right.
Even during office hours, I've given things and they've come back.
Even last week, a couple documents were defaced, they were meaningless documents, the family's on the way to pick up.
Yes.
And if they're gonna be defaced, they disappeared, we've got things disappear, had to go through work and do it again. When there's somebody here and it's during regular office hours, anything we have is open to anybody to see. But to leave it out overnight for somebody, I wouldn't, I wouldn't ask for, for myself, um...
It's not necessary.
I, I wouldn't ask if Mr. Daniel Lacy made the same request. I would say, no, you can look at it during regular, regular times.
Everything's email, in the email. Get it.
Yeah, I don't, uh, yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I don't think it's necessary.
During workday, during the, during regular office hours?
Oh, that's during workday, everything's, you know...
But it's still though, it needs to stay where I can end my site.
I understand that, you're responsible for that and you're the one who's, what's gonna be online if something disappears.
If something disappears, then everybody's going after her.
Contract or cost of money or whatever, right.
Right, and, and I have original signatures, it's original documents, I keep it in order and I want it to stay that way.
I personally had to drive back down here again when a document was lost last year.
Mm-hmm.
After, went to that commissioner and then three, four days later, we didn't have it back yet and there was a deadline, I had to drive back in.
Oh, yeah, that's happened multiple times.
On a Friday to sign something because I'm not going through that again.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, yeah, so I would say...
Everyone's aware.
Yeah.
I, I would back you on that, but...
Not leave overnight.
We have regular office hours when you work and that is your work and you, you need to secure documents when you leave. Because it may not be her, if you leave things out exposed somewhere else, it could be anyone else that comes in the building. And we got cleaning people that are here that, there are people that come in and out of our building at night, um, that we don't know. We've seen it on the camera before, we've had visitors with other employees or whatever that have been here in the office after hours and stuff and we can't, you know, that's the county's, that's the people's work, that's...
It's your office record for the meeting.
Yes, I agree. Anybody else have anything pretty good? Last week, one other thing I was trying to think of was, uh, let me look at my schedule last week to see what we, we had after the meeting. Oh, after the meeting last Wednesday, uh, I went to the, uh, Jobs Ohio announcement.
Yes.
That's something that we've always been in a region with Cuyahoga County and Jobs Ohio handled all northeast Ohio. And when funds would come down from the state to go toward Jobs Ohio or they try to attract business, Cuyahoga County with their three million people always got the lion's share.
True.
And Mahoning, Trumbull and Ashtria, um, got what crumbs were left over after all the programs are gone. We always had a fight, you gotta seat the table and try to get a little bit of funding. Um, there's been lobbying from people here, including the, uh, Chamber Commerce Support Authority and some people that are tighter with the governor's administration. And last Wednesday, the governor came to town at the Eastwood Expo Center and announced a new, since its inception, the only new, uh, Jobs Ohio Zone. It's called the Lake River Zone, Ashtria, Trumbull, Mahoning, Columbiana. It has their own Jobs Ohio staff, their own board of directors and they're gonna be treated as equals with the other seven, I believe it was, Jobs Ohio Zones across the state, six or seven. So now, uh, our economic leaders in the county believe we're gonna get a, a much larger share of, uh, attention from the state, funding from the state. And, uh, when it comes to trying to attract businesses, uh, to Ohio, we're gonna work as a unified Lake River Zone here. And even the other zones were happy to not have to, they, they got a smaller area where they, they can concentrate their funds. Uh, but it was a, a great announcement type of deal. Our Valley Vision twenty fifty, uh, some of the funds out of twenty fifty, they applied to this new Jobs Ohio Zone. Uh, but with that, they're using that to match the state to leverage another, we put four hundred thousand out of that and so did Mahoning out of our million commitment. But they leveraged that to get eight hundred thousand back so that they can replenish back in. So it is, uh, it is something that we're moving ahead in massive ways. When they talked about all of the statistics that the governor gave last week, and I, and I'm sorry, I don't have that here, but there is a slideshow, there is a Jobs Ohio slideshow on their site that you can, you can witness or I don't know if you watched the conference or not. This is gonna bring us really from the bottom to right up to the upper third a- as far as the state goes in a lot of categories by doing this. So, pretty big deal, we're not gonna see results immediately, but we are gonna see the results very, very soon. And, uh, the person they hired as the director of this, um, was the CFO at Sweeney Chevy, very successful dealership in Mahoning County. And our Trumbull County representatives are, um, uh, Anthony Trevina from the Port Authority and...
Mr. George.
Uh, he's, he's Mahoning County.
Okay.
No, Anthony and Chuck, I believe are...
Chuck George, yeah, he's Trumbull.
No, he's lives in Campville.
Oh, but it's, but he's...
Guy Covella was a Trumbull guy and Matt Blair.
Okay.
Um, so, um, we got good representation on there that, that have a direct line. All four of those gentlemen can pick up the governor's cell phone anytime and, um, so for them to be our representatives, but they have a good board, you know, that's made up of two from each county. They got two people from Ashtria, two from Trumbull, two from Mahoning, two from Columbiana. It's a very strong and powerful board when it comes to, um, having a direct link to Columbus.
Kudos to the chamber and to the Port Authority for their lobbying, because I know this didn't happen overnight. We've been trying to get out of that zone and create a different zone because we haven't gotten the funding that we think we deserve and that we know we deserve, so hats off to them because they've really made it happen.
Right, so they're predicting big, big things over the next couple of years because of this and, uh, I look forward to that. Okay, that's, uh, that's all I have, I see, I have a meeting today with the Amish community. I got a meeting at... Oh, we are really running late, um...
Yeah.
Uh, Sheriff Brown's representative's waiting for me now and I got a meeting with the Amish community too, so.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second a motion.
For Angela Mesa.
Yes.
For Malloy.
Yes.